Thank you, Mr. Byler.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Julianne, excuse us this evening. Um, Mr. Grazer, excuse us this evening. Mr. Cruz.
Present.
Um, Ms. George.
Here.
For form of requests.
Thank you. When we made some adjustments in this agenda based upon the number of people that were in the lobby, I decided that we would have them be here so that everyone would be accommodated. And what I've done as well as Council President is change the order of agenda and move item number three. And we're gonna take that first to item number one. This will be a presentation by our City Planner. However, next Monday will be the public hearing on this particular item. And that is the GP 1256 S P thirteen hundred, New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. And at that time, that public hearing next Monday, which is March the twenty-third, anyone wishing to speak on that particular item will have an opportunity to. But this time, we'll be handing the speech over.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Spencer's gonna actually do the, um, first presentation. I just wanna remind the Council that you should have in your packet, uh, illustration of what, um, the proposed extension is. This is GP twelve fifty-six, Site Plan thirteen hundred, New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. Mr. Spencer will begin the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor President, um, and Mayor Council. Uh, the first item before you this evening is GP twelve fifty-six S P thirteen hundred. Uh, this is a special use end site planner, per request of New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, uh, for the construction of new parking lots, um, in a picnic area, in rear yards, three properties on Sargent. And it's part of the House for Religious Studies and Counseling. Uh, this particular item actually came before the Planning Department, ultimately, the Planning Commission, uh, in April two thousand thirteen. So it has been a couple of years to making the order actually has been before Council. Uh, at that time, the petitioner brought in a project, uh, for two parcels on Sargent itself. Uh, you can see, uh, with the plans here before you that there are five, I'm sorry, yeah, there are five parcels that are actually shown. Uh, originally, when this team made those two parcels in a fifty-four car parking lot, as well as using, uh, one of the homes for religious studies. Um, the Planning Commission and staff went through a couple of reviews, uh, with the petitioner on this particular item. Uh, there was numerous concerns from staff and from the commission with regard to encroachment into the neighborhood. Uh, the parking lot itself actually came in about half way into the residential zoning on the two houses. Uh, the church did actually purchase both of those homes. And I noted one of them would be used for, uh, religious studies and counseling. Uh, the second house would have been used as a rental unit. Um, through, uh, staff review, with the Planning Commission's review, uh, and comments from the numerous residents that did attend, the petitioner that made adjustments to their plan came back a couple of months later with a new revised plan, uh, showing three parcels, uh, now which they had owned and that they were looking to develop on. Uh, the westernmost parcel, uh, showed a parking lot for twenty thousand spaces. Uh, what they did with, uh, the parking lot, uh, that was on the two properties up there, they actually made this a single lane of parking that came just off the park, off the driveway for the church on the south side. So they reduced the parking, uh, from where it was initially the impact and moved it to the west side of the property or west side of, uh, Sargent with the larger parking lot down there. Um, continue to use the existing also religious studies as well. Um, staff and the Planning Commission cited same concerns, specifically concerns having to do with special use requirements within the loan ordinance for residential zoning district. The, uh, petitioner then went back and made additional changes. And the latest plan he had before you, they do only five of the ten, uh, lots on the north side of Sargent now. Uh, four of those parcels they were looking to develop on, uh, the westernmost being a picnic area, recreation area, uh, two of the lots for the fifty-four car spaces, uh, and then is originally, uh, the house to be used for counseling and religious studies. Uh, again, staff and the Planning Commission brought up same concerns. I do wanna say that all through this process, over the last couple of years, uh, the petitioner and the church have very, have very receptive to the concerns of both staff and the residents, done what they could in order to provide for their needs. Right now, they have a parking problem outside. So we do have a need for parking, parking for, for the church itself. Um, and I noted that the main concerns that staff had and the commission had to do with the special use standards of zoning ordinance. And I'd just like to re-visit to you, just to give you a point of reference, that when we're reviewing the special use in the planning plan, that these are the items and standards that we have to take a look at as to whether something that we can, uh, be in favor of or something not to be in favor of. So those standards are as follows. That the residential character of the area shall be maintained. That the subject property so located is not to hinder the natural and presumed residential development of the area nor negatively impact existing wetlands and woodlands as defined by the city's downtown wetland and woodland ban. The subject property will act as a buffer or transitional area between the residential development and non-residential development. The location signs and intensity areas of operation with such proposed use must be designed to eliminate any consequence likely emanating therefrom, which would cause adverse effects to the occupants of any nearby permitted use. Proposed use must be in accordance with the spirit and purpose of the chapter and not be inconsistent with or contrary to the objectives ought to be accomplished by this chapter and principles of the plan. Proposed use, given such characters, equal or traffic generated, will not have adverse effects or be under valid surrounding land uses or the dig in thoroughfares. Proposed use of such character and intensity in the range of the site, so as to eliminate any adverse effects resulting from noise, dust, flare, odor of fumes. Uh, proposed use or change of use will not be adverse to the promotion of the health, safety, well for the community. Uh, in addition, uh, there were other requirements as well, uh, those being that, uh, the, the property to be located on a major thoroughfare. Sargent itself is on a major thoroughfare, nine mile would be, and you know that the main town of the church does make nine miles. Sargent is not a main thoroughfare, and you know the concern there as well. So the staff went through the special use standards with the Planning Commission and with the petitioner. Um, we did note, uh, in our minds that there were issues, uh, with regards to the proposal, uh, potential for increased traffic on Sargent with noise, flare, um, that the property is not to be located on a major thoroughfare. Um, there's, uh, the, uh, unpeered missionary wall that was required, so our offensive being proposed. Um, so with items like that when we look at, um, sampling the special use standards, and in our minds, this particular project did not meet the standards of the requirements of the zoning ordinance and the residential zoning district of this particular property. Um, with that, I do know the petitioner is here. I believe that, uh, Mr. George Hartman is here representing the church. Um, so I would just like to give them an opportunity at least to, uh, to follow up with, uh, their project.
Could you come into the mic, give us your name and your, your address right?
Yes. George Hartman, Hartman Architects, six nine zero five Telegraph Roads, we want a one through the hills, four eight three oh one. I also have with me this evening Jonathan Trout, Pastor Dave Roderson, and, uh, and Pastor George Do. Pastor's going to speak a little bit about the church and history here in Southfield.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I wanna say that we here in New Hope Missionary Baptist Church is here to service this community spiritually, counseling in every way. Since nineteen eighty-two, when we first incorporated the church, uh, we purchased a lot of houses based nine mile, and we expanded the church. When we came over to Council some years ago, you know, to build this new facility, I think the Council required or requested us to destroy that old facility to come over to this new facility, which we did. And in our efforts to cooperate with the Council, cooperate with the community, we changed, uh, our plans on board on occasion to meet every criteria we came in order to accommodate everyone. Uh, we also opened our church, uh, voting there, we worked with the, uh, turkeys in Southfield in order to cooperate in every way we came. And going forward, we plan to continue doing that. We here to service the community, and that's what it's all about. If you have any questions, uh, here, great.
Good evening. My name's Jonathan Trout. I live at two five three three Arrowhead Street, Southfield, Michigan. Uh, resident of Southfield since nineteen eighty-five. Uh, I just wanna give, uh, our version, uh, overview of the project and our thought processes related to that. Um, this project incorporated, um, following elements. One was extension of our church parking lot to incorporate approximately fifty-two to fifty-four parking spaces behind two three seven one two and two three six nine oh Sargent. This would reduce our current parking shortage by about thirty percent. Currently, we are about a hundred and sixty spaces under capacity. The residents, uh, at these two locations would still have lots of approximately one hundred feet wide by one hundred forty feet deep. Two, a special use permit to use two three seven seven four Sargent for biblical counseling as a vis- biblical counseling training facility. Three, utilization of the vacant area behind two three nine hundred Sargent as a picnic area when weather allows. Now, from the very beginning, we wanted to take into consideration the best way to do this project without significant impact on the residents of Sargent Street. We wanted to, one, minimize traffic on Sargent, two, keep the residential feel of the community, and minimize distractions to the residents. We reviewed our plans with some of the residents on Sargent on at least three different locations over the past two years. We made changes based on their feedback and will provide a more secure environment for everyone. In our meetings with the Planning Commission, we listened to their feedback and incorporated changes based on their comments. Versions of our plans, as Mr. Spencer indicated, were modified at least three times. This plan we have before you today incorporate the fact that the annual parking lot is not adjacent to anyone's property other than New Hope. Uh, we have included a property buffer around the lot that was, that was not, um, that we do not intend to change going forward. The utilization of two three seven seven four Sargent as the biblical counseling center was situated so that the main interest entrance would be from the rear parking lot, as the proposed parking lot. Okay, we are not requesting any signage for that facility. Uh, training available counselors will take place on Tuesdays and Thursdays from six thirty P M. to eight thirty P M. Basically, that training is Bible study. On other days, individual Bible-based counseling sessions will be held by appointment only. Now, this would allow individuals to get the level of personal counseling that we cannot provide in our church due to the availability or lack of availability of office and classroom space. On most days, when you drive by our church, you will see that a great deal of activity is going on. This usually means classrooms are full. Classrooms are also not the ideal place to provide personalized level of counseling. We don't want to change the weather of the property at two three seven seven four Sargent. We want the option at some point to probably revert that property back to residential use. The picnic area at the west end at two three nine hundred Sargent allows space for our ministries to have activities during the summer. In our past, our youth department used this area for special services like a petting zoo for children with a lesson about God's creations. This occurred during regular church service. Other ministries have had picnics in that area. We listened to feedback from our neighbors to incorporate gates that would keep others out at inappropriate times. In our effort to blend in with the area as opposed to standing out, we would like to continue the wood paneling, panel fencing that exists. This fencing is what any resident could install at their choosing. Therefore, there being an obvious designation by a brick wall that might signify something different. We truly respect and appreciate all feedback and comments made in relation to this project over this process. We would like to thank those from the community, the commission, and the South Bird Neighborhood Association that gave us their insight into this project, be it positive or negative. We know that every step of this process, God has guided us and made opportunities available for property acquisition to make this project possible. So, um, at that point, I'd like to just say thank you for, for hearing us. And, um, this is Valerie Crump. She's the Director of our Biblical Counseling.
Good evening. Here is the Chair to the Council members. I'm Reverend Valerie Crump. I'm a associate minister at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, Director of Biblical Counseling and Christian Education. And I'd like to speak a little further to the Biblical Counseling and Religious Training Center that we would like to have at two three seven four four Sargent Street. Um, that particular location, we very carefully looked at the configuration of the property and maintained it as intended intentionally. Uh, we made different areas in the house for counseling and, uh, training. And that training is not for large classes. It's for small group studies from ten to twelve people at the most for each of the two classrooms that we have built. But the purpose of that center is for our members and other members of the community to come and be able to learn how to change their hearts and minds to be able to be good citizens. And we knew that in such a way that no properly had to do anything like that. We said, we show people how there is a better way to live their lives. We save marriages. We show people how to parent properly. Uh, we show people how to get along, church members and people of communities, to be citizens of, good citizens of the community. And our purpose here tonight is simply to let you know that we want to continue to be good citizens in the city of Southfield and in that particular area. Keep you citizens. Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, Reverend Crump, just for the benefit of the Council, could you just, um, talk about the maximum number of, uh, visitors and employees that might be at the Biblical Counseling Center at any, you know, the maximum amount that might, might be there at any time?
Yes, um, our staff, there are twelve staff members, and we meet once per month on Monday evening from six thirty to eight thirty. And that's typically the hours of operation for the center and for counseling. There may be occasionally someone there at ten o'clock, particularly myself, because I'm retired and I'm there, I can be there during the day. But most people are counseling from six thirty to eight thirty. If we have classes, there would be two areas that we would train in, and one would hold up to twenty people, uh, another room would hold up to ten. So, uh, at any given time, there might be as many as thirty people there, but that's very rare.
And, and that includes your counselors as well?
Includes counselors and staff.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we will also try to counsel at this time, and, um, so we can stay good and, um, counsel any questions, Mr. Byler.
To Reverend Murberston, um, I, um, think you've been a very good neighbor. Uh, I'm familiar with your church for about twenty-five years. And I think on this, you've operated in a very good state. I remember, uh, when this was supposed to come to Council, I think year ago, October, um, this is a different plan than we're seeing today, and I know one of my concerns was I wouldn't wanna live next to a parking lot. Um, my, I have a couple of questions. Do you plan to, I heard rent, are you, there are, there are, um, five houses altogether. Do you plan to rent any of those? I thought I heard somebody say rent.
Not, not houses that we use in the, uh,
Oh, sure.
Both, all houses are for rent.
Okay. And, or, uh, my other question was, do you plan to demolish them?
At this point, we do not plan to change any of the configurations of the building.
Okay. So in other words, somebody driving down Sargent Avenue would just see, uh,
They would see regular houses.
Houses like they're, they're,
They would never, right, they'd see regular houses. We don't have no plans to, uh, destroy those.
Okay. Um, I have attended your church, as you know, um, on an occasion, and, uh, you indeed do have a parking problem.
Yes.
Have you, um, and I know you're doing shuttles on a bus, um, have you thought about, when I drive by, um, the church across the street from you, the, uh, sort of off the ways, uh, the church of Latter Day Saints, that parking lot is, um, pretty empty. Have you made any outreach to them?
We did try and contact them once upon a time, but I didn't thank you soon. Doesn't have a different facility, different theology. So we were not means, they were not means to allow us to use that.
All right. And of course, the shopping center across the street has denied you use for all?
No, because we, uh, many times, uh, many of our members will park there because there's no parking available. And sometimes we get a ticket, so we make the trip to go. So what we do, we did, uh, we just do the best we could. Should you pass by all the church, you may give a key, you will see that parking is sealed to pass.
I, I have. Um, to the Planner, um, normally, uh, this, we're a little bit of a lot, because this is being introduced to us tonight, um, just to explain, um, we have a public hearing scheduled, I believe, for next week on this issue. And, um, normally then we would be, uh, given a complete packet as well as the management of the Planning Commission. Um, uh, and I expect that we'll, we'll be getting that, uh, later this week. So my question with Planner this evening is, um, what was the recommendation of the Planning Commission on this project?
They recommended denial at this time because they couldn't meet all of the standards for special use. And again, I, I think one of the things we tried to focus on was limiting the encroachment of the parking into the area and having them have maybe all of the contiguous properties. Whereas if they could maybe have one row of parking all along the frontage and then create a fence or a barrier, it would be less impactful than the hundred to hundred and fifty feet that they're approaching into these blocks. So, again, they, they have made, um, a lot of strides from originally two parcels to five. I think the commission thought if they could get those other three and have a contiguous ownership and then only have the encroachment maybe twenty feet or two, and get to pick up as many cars, that that would be a better solution.
So if I'm hearing you right, then you're talking about, um, parking behind the church, a single bank of par- of, single bank of, uh,
Right, and then to move that wall or fence just twenty feet further so that it's only an encroachment of twenty feet as opposed to a hundred and plus feet. That way, I believe they get their, at least their fifteen, maybe even more spaces. Um, and it would help to preserve that character of those deep blocks and reduce the amount of trees that are being removed and so forth.
Okay. All right, those are all my questions, uh, for this evening.
Any other questions?
I was just, you mentioned in your survey that you met with the, uh, homeowners association in the area. Uh, what was, what would you say overall feedback from them was? I'm not sure, was the biggest feeling, would it deserve the general feeling to support something like this?
Uh, the general feeling was not to support. Um, of course, uh, the association, you know, the attendance at the association meetings, not, you know, not a lot of folks. However, uh, um, you know, we, we actually went to the association, association meeting, and we spoke at that meeting. So, you know, there were perceptions as to, you know, this massive encroachment. I, I think we were able to temper that, but, uh, for some folks, encroachment is encroachment no matter what. So, uh, we did the best we can. We reached out to communicate. We wanted to continue with that.
I was just wondering, like, the picnic area, or even some of the other, uh, meeting rooms and spaces, would those be things that might be open to the public to use or, or?
Sure, we've had the association meet at the church, and it's, you know, all they have to do is let us know what they want to meet, and they can meet there. They, they met there and, and came out and said, we don't work for this project, and our church. So, we don't, you know, and, and we still keep that door open because, you know, it's our community.
I just have a few questions. I have, we have a lot, New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, you've been great neighbors here, this year, Southfield, we've served the community, and we continue to serve the community even with the, with counseling that's done. But I have a few questions that, as it relates to the counseling. So it's done presently Tuesday and Thursday, six thirty to eight thirty in the evening. And, um, Monday is your staff. That's our staff meeting once a month, or not every Monday. Um, we do regular counseling, that's for the training on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but during the week, from six thirty to eight thirty, we do have counselors stand there coming to council and in the house, because it's a small house, there might be three counselors there and their counselors. So no more than ten people, because there would also be staffers there just to monitor everything. So I'm concerned the cars, the number of cars that will be there on a Tuesday or Thursday, presently the cars will be parked on Sargent, is that right? No, no. Do you park in the, Right, in the, your parking lot, right. It's not intended, There's no parking that's, uh, Not intended to park on Sargent, at all. All right. Um, my other question has to do with the number of parking spaces. You said you currently need a hundred and sixty, can you, can you, your current?
It's, um, you know, the math was, our capacity for our facility is about twelve hundred, and right now, we have about two hundred and sixty-five parking spaces. I believe the formula is, uh, three people for every car, which means we could have as many as four hundred and eighty parking spaces. Um, but, um, there is a property that's located on, or road that, uh, we would look at as our, our primary acquisition to expand our parking. Uh, we talked to the owner, and at this time, she's, she's happy, she's, you know, mortgage is paid, and, you know, why, why move? But she's indicated at some point she will move, and at some point, we'll be able to continue that expansion from that now.
All right. I did notice that, um, Sargent has a light on the corner of that complex road. So it's actually, it's not a major thoroughfare, but it's quite a bit of traffic that still comes up and down this particular street. I, I have to say, I, I'm just in favor. You definitely have parking. You know, I've been to your church on several occasions, and there's many places to park about. So I'm definitely, um, in support of what's in force this evening. Again, this is just the Council's information, uh, information of what it is. And next week will be the formal public hearing, if that makes sense.
That's correct.
And then it will be open to the public, and we can go from there.
Good for the Chair. If I just, if you could, uh, you're currently either leasing or own the V M C W Frosting that's on the other side of Telegraph?
Yes, yes, we have.
And how many spaces are in that, that facility?
Uh, approximately a hundred and fifty. Approximately a hundred and fifty spaces on that facility. Um, I want to also note is that we have had access to that space for, um, about eight, nine years. Uh, we do have an agreement, we always had an agreement with our insurance policy that, that a, a, I forget the, the term, but, uh, they're included in our insurance policy. So we have used that facility, uh, on numerous occasions for expanding parking with our shuttle. Uh, the problem is, a lot of times, individuals, when they come into the parking lot, they don't want to go over there, you know? And so, uh, those are potential souls that, that we lose, because they'll come in, they'll knock around, and they'll move back out. Also, from a safety standpoint standpoint, it increases our exposure when we have to shuttle these people back and forth. So we want to try to keep as much on premise as possible, uh, also from a safety standpoint.
Any other questions, counsel? All right, this concludes item number one, and we're going to shift back to our regular study session room, and so we'll continue with our agenda then. Thank you very much for your time. All right, you know, your question was...
I said, "Oh, please, please." Time, number one.
And chairman, may I ask you to give a little summary of the sources to help us talk about these people on this item?
You ready, Mr. Mayor? Do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I believe, I believe everyone has in their packet memo that the mayor asked about the process, a potential process for establishing a steering committee, uh, and this is based on the project of public spaces for creating good design. They studied over thousands of urban centers and parks and places, and determine what's makes them successful and what, uh, causes them to fail. And as we consider potential redevelopment for across the street, um, I just wanted to share some examples of, of good projects that have spurred and developed, and fostered economic developments in and around the public space. And the first one was the Campus Marsh Detroit. This actually won American Planning Association Project of the Year award a year or two ago. Uh, and it's a, it's a, it's a space that's programmed for people, and it has a lot going on, and, and spaces can be programmed there throughout the year. And it's not a large space, but, uh, they have everything from bringing in sand in the summer and creating a beach atmosphere. As you know, they have ice skating, they have concerts and festivals, there's a small pavilion that has a restaurant with indoor/outdoor seating. Um, this is the center stage for many of the different festivals within the city. It has tribute to the historic monuments, um, of, of Detroit in the past, and it has a lot of modern conveniences as well. Another, another success project, um, that the project for public space talks about is Bryant Park. And if any of you had visited New York City in the seventies and eighties, this is not too far from Times Square and Forty Second Street, this was one of the most dangerous places to visit, as far as drug trafficking and violent crime, and this is just adjacent to the New York Public Library. Well, the business community said that we are going to take this space back, program it for people, program it for families, and it's one of the most successful urban redevelopment projects, uh, in the United States as well as the world. Again, it has opportunities for these small incubator spaces to sell, sell different wares. It has festivals throughout the year, it has capacity for outdoor events, including movies in the park, and it has, um, some nice features providing shade, seating areas, water, and green space. The green space, uh, is open and flexible for a lot of different programming. Another one you may be familiar with, this is only a small sliver of Millennium Park that has concerts and events, it has, um, butterfly garden, has herb garden. But one of the greatest features, if, if you've gone to Chicago recently, you know that everybody likes to go to the Bean. This is a sculptural piece, it's a reflective piece, and everybody likes to get their picture taken, taken by it. And a nice iconic element, uh, across the street would help, um, attract, um, not only our business and resident community, but also people from outside the area. Uh, I think Mr. Zorn has talked about possibly a field trip, it's one of the lifestyle centers, this is one of the most prominent ones, it is in a northern climate, it's located in Columbus, Ohio. Again, they program space, um, for year-long activities around people, around families. In this particular case, they have the dancing fountain that the children like to use, it's an open green space venue, and it's surrounded on all four sides by restaurants, outdoor seating, and retail, all within walking distance. It, it's probably less than an acre altogether, but it's a little programmed space that draws people, and draws people watching people. Uh, another one, a great find, is try to incorporate some indoor market space. This is in Milwaukee, it's a venue in Milwaukee Public Market. It's, it's designed and developed in the old historic warehousing district, and many of those have a night scene of microbreweries, uh, different entertainment venues in the evening. During the day, especially on Sundays, they have the brunch venue, they open up the large doors and have outdoor seating for brunch. This provides a year-round facility, um, that showcases the local cheeses and wines and textiles from the local economy. It's a tourist, a destination in its own right, but more importantly, it's used by the residents and people living in Milwaukee, because it's authentic. And it has both the indoor spaces, and that can be opened up and can extend out to the, this public realm. Another one is, uh, in Cleveland, uh, West Side Market, based on the same concept where they've taken an old historic building and converted their A G M space into markets that sell bakeries and cheeses and foods and so forth. Here's a, here's a more local example, this is Grand Valley State University in Grand Rapids. This concept incorporates classroom space and office space with a covered pavilion that provides light year-round, but has an open market, there's a small Starbucks, there's a bookstore, there's a sandwich shop, and, uh, students and people in the university district of the downtown campus can come there and gather. And, and I just wanted to show you, it really sums up, each of these spaces meets the principles of why public space succeed, and eliminates the reason why they fail. And, uh, as we continue to explore marketing opportunities and private redevelopment, one of the catalysts that I believe is to take an acre or two of the nine-acre space, create a public, a public place similar to these places, that will help spur private reinvestment and private development as the city goes forward and, and assemble the team. And that's, that's kind of a short synopsis of all the backup material in your packet. If, if you have to answer any questions that the council may have. Question? Um, there's a recommendation here, um, it's going on the twenty, it's going on the twenty-third, then?
That is, recommendation that the city's ministry is, it'll be on the twenty-third. Staff has started the process of preparing an R F Q for the appropriate design professional parking consultant. And the objective would authorize us to proceed with the R F Q, which we formally have started, as well as allocate a line item budget up to two hundred thousand, uh, for, to eventually retain the appropriate professionals. Thank you.
So that would be on, that's possibly going on tonight?
No.
So the two hundred thousand covers the...
Two hundred thou...
Just tell me what that covers.
Two hundred thousand would create a budget. And as we go through, uh, the retaining various consultants, then we would allocate an amount with each consultant. For example, there may be a market analysis person, there may be a landscape architect, there may be a site tour, there may be different menus, uh, that would, that would be up to two hundred thousand to be allocated. We may only spend a hundred and fifty, only a hundred, but we would go through that process incrementally in steps. One of the processes would be to assemble and gather all of the various design concepts that have been prepared. There have been documents prepared by students, private architects, different developers over the years, but that would be one of the exercises we have council go through.
Now, the, yeah, in terms of the R F Q, that's going to be broad, it's not going to be narrow.
The intent is to be broad and, you know, ideally to get somewhat of national prominence is what, what I would...
But are you going to segment out the, uh, architect, the marketing, the, um...
I, I, I think, I think we want some flexibility. For example, the city center has already retained a, uh, Robert Gibbs to do some market and analysis, who, uh, who's done some retail. But as we go through this process, one of the, my, my initial would be to gather and review what we've done, have council, uh, take some type of tour. Uh, Mr. Crowe and I've had a meeting with an architect who's worked on the reposition and development of four similar properties. One of them was the Eastern Center in Ohio. Um, I, I don't think we've fully had defined the process, this is still an evolving process, but my general thought would be to find someone of national prominence that will have, uh, that will be able to garner the recognition of the finance community. At the end of the day, there's what is, is what we may envision and like to see, then there's what a developer's willing to build, and then there's what the finance community's willing to finance. So, you know, you want to be, make sure that you have some entity that is someone the finance community's comfortable with.
Prominence, not prominence.
I, prominence is, is important, and I think, you know, and Mr. Gibbs is one of those individuals at malls across the country, retailers use him. You know, so I, I don't think we've honed in on any one firm, I think we're still looking for a...
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure, yeah, I'm done. I just want to make sure that we're not just trying to give it to one person, but we're going to open it up. Do you want to give us some greater knowledge?
And you mentioned...
No, I'm not going to, I just want to make sure that we, we're thinking about other companies that are out there, but give us a good, or not just give it to the same people all the time, like, right?
I mean, it's fine, they, they, we should have had somebody, they don't differ, because, and I, I want to promise this, because if you don't have somebody that other people respect and will lead by, you're, you're, you're going to lose it.
And I don't feel like this needs two hundred thousand dollars, maybe in two hundred thousand dollars maybe in vacant, as opposed to having the blanket check...
That's just cool, isn't that, that's cool? I mean, that's not something that's going to go all at once.
It's not one contract, it's, it's a line item budgeting up to two hundred thousand. And as we enter into a contract, we'll break that out incrementally, trying to do it in phases.
Yeah, I'm sure the public piece of the city center is the most prominent piece across the street. Everyone has been laying back and band-aiding things and expanding parking lots, and really not willing to, to go the distance of helping in creating a city center as we have tried to do over the period of years. This particular piece is really the piece that has to look at, and I agree with you, across-the-board, uh, ideas, because what happens here is going to have to excite all the others that are around there to get off their duff and start becoming a part of it. And, uh, you know, you hear about so-and-so buying a building in Chicago, another one doing it over here, another one doing it over here, they come over and just made a request about a plan to expand the parking lot, because they want to go all the way to Civic Center Drive with more parking, and really with more land coverage. And it's about time that we have, you know, density, and our L T I is going, we have a student body, I mentioned the other day about all the other universities and advanced educational places we have in the city, and, and that's going to make it all come together. I mean, this would be a real strong, you know, hate to say it, like the university town, but be a little different. Uh, we have, because of the vacant piece, we have so many opportunities, it would be all over the place, out of the box, if we have to be, and, uh, and I think that, that would be the showplace.
I think what I'm saying is, you spent money in the past to get a vision and not here, actually.
Well, yes, thirty years ago.
Spin again, and we don't have a...
Thirty years have been going on, a lot of kind of money, yeah. That's why it's time to get moving.
Is this a one-time allocation, just for this?
I would envision we're establishing a budget for up to two hundred thousand for this, and then we'll begin this process of going through the R F Qs and going through. But I, I just want to comment on the mantle president's comment, yes, we've gone through this historically, but that's part of what I envisioned. Let's gather all the documents and glean through those, and are there design elements within those documents that have been previously created? I've got drawings that I've seen students do, things that I believe the city's paid, things that private firms have paid for, I think they need to all be kind of reviewed, and, you know, so, a lot of the design concepts may have been done. I also believe there's value in taking a hands-on, very tangible, going out and touring what other, uh, groups have done. I, I have shared with you, the, the city of Columbus has four different nonprofit development corporations that are all partners in this type of redevelopment. And I, and I also think it's important for council and for the audience here to hear that this has been a long-term process. Two thou, you know, February two thousand and nine, you would have put in place the beginning of a reconstruction of Evergreen Road, which will happen. You were able to take that on just a complete road reconstruction to a major investment in placemaking design elements. The city center board is embarked on a very aggressive strategy. Two thousand and eight, they were doing a concert every week. They changed their strategy from events and place, place making to some infrastructure investment. The installation of the garbage cans, the benches, the decorative crosswalk. What we did on Civic Center, the Brownfield Plan that was put in place on this piece of property, this has all been leading to this. This piece here is probably our largest challenge, and in going through this exercise, I think going out, seeing, kicking the tires, will have value for us. Um, you know, I think it's, uh, definitely worth a two, a three-hour drive to Columbus and touring and meeting with some other design professionals.
You know, and, and, you know, my son lives in Dexter, and, and, you know, everybody goes downtown Dexter, everybody. They have a park in the middle, businesses around it, and then they just did a river walk, and, and, uh, and it just, you just draw more people, it's the most beautiful... I think, I think it was Orange Hill did that, I don't know who did it, H R C, one of them did it, and it's just gorgeous. And then everybody, you see them walking along the water walk, you see them going to the park, you see them going to the restaurants, they got four or five new restaurants now being put up in that area. And, and it's, and, you know, a little town really came up with a great little idea and it made it, you know, it used to be a little old town that you walked through and goodbye, all of a sudden with the river walk and the park in the middle, you know, Plymouth's got a park in the middle the same way, they got a, a place where they have concerts and things like that. So, you know, we have, we, we have the luxury of having a big front yard here that we can have concerts, and we can have a lot of different things going on across the street, that would be complimenting this, if you're going to. I, I'm really excited about it, I think the, you know, the most fantastic piece of property in Southfield, it is.
Hollow World announced, um, they're going, they're going to take space, Shelly, how many jobs?
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty jobs, relocating, but when Ms. Freeman and I met with them that last October, November, one of the reasons they cited is they liked the vision, what we were doing and investing in our infrastructure, they liked what they saw happening in the city center. They went to the website, they, they looked at that, and, and they saw a community that had a progressive vision for creating, you know, this sense of place, this little town within this big urban environment where the scale works for people. And that's the opportunity we have, and with the acquisition, we're... And with the acquisition, we're now finally putting this under our control.
Just see the calls I got, because of the articles in the paper, especially, couldn't believe that our police were down 72% in actual, in that call. And at the fire department, you know, 13,740 runs, four units, you know, four-minute, four-minute response time. I mean, people have called up and saying, man, you know, what do you have going over there, how many firemen do you have, how many policemen do you have? And that's that thing that hasn't got out enough is what we have to offer, the services that we have. Once that starts blowing out, you know, you're going to have a lot of people like the peach, whatever it is coming in, and, you know, it's just, I mean, everything's starting to explode, I feel, in the city.
We're definitely hoping for it. All right, now, getting back to the, you think that you want to create a steering committee to brainstorm, or flip out here, it's going to be on the small pieces.
I would like to sit down with the administrator and Terry and maybe you and there's four of us and figure it out.
I just want to...
I mean, I just think that, I mean, we have to, we have to go from here to the next step. We have decided what is the next step we're going to be in, with the next, administrator would like us to get in the bus and go see different kinds of things, be exposed to different feelings of what has been going around. You look at Detroit, this, we call it, somebody said this crazy guy who did the Hudson Building with all the big arts, you've probably seen the paper, but you look at the attention, it's in every paper, every magazine, you know, and it's not even built.
I guess I was asking that, because I didn't want other people to set the vision, and we're back where one is not the vision of the council.
You have somebody that is a professional, that guides who that person is, I think the four picked it out, who that person is, I don't know, but what's your suggestions, Pat?
No, I just want to say, this, we've been working with the city center project ever since I've been shot in council, and before that, Don has, I have, that was my big project early on when Vicki's all home with her and wanted to build, you know, one of the, before Summer's that built there, she wanted to put all these good sense places across the on the freeway purpose here. But Don and I, and I know Don started this whole thing, but it has to be really guided and by council, I mean, it has to be what council wants. It's fine to hire a professional, but I don't want to see a steering committee just be made up of staff and a few professionals, it's council's vision, it's council's action. You can have a couple of professionals that are going to advise us, but the impetus has to come from council.
I, my comment on the steering committee is I obviously favor a public participation process, however, a job that myself and legal and staff does is tough enough with just one city council, when you start bringing others in, it gets a little tougher. If in the event it's decided that it can be a broader group, I want roles very clearly defined, and particularly who has votes and who doesn't. But if I had my druthers, I'd probably, at the end, final control in council is where I'm at, and those people who are elected to manage it. But I do favor the shred process and engaging people to, I mean, some of the things that's happening on our, Terry, the program you're running, where people send photos of design...
Mind mixer?
Of design elements they like from other parts of the country, little towns, big cities, you know, those are, that could give us ideas.
That's, I mean, I mean, that's fine, we should look at all that stuff, because sometimes we can start from, but we've got four plans at least that we've had, we maybe need to have, you know, illustrated, but this is not going to be a, you know, overnight thing, we've got a lot of, and that piece of property that we own is going to affect the town for the whole place, and it's very, very critical, and it has to be council.
Without any objection, if we call our chairman of the council, if we want to, the next item on our agenda is Marcus Stein, you can add things up.
Yes, Senator, as the council remembers, about two months ago at our studies, our representatives from Denso were here to ask the process about moving forward to change their sign. They do now control all or most of the property, and there was a limitation on the previously approved plan agreed from the late 80s saying that the sign itself can only be named after the name of the subdivision. The council wasn't particularly thrilled with the proposed sign at the time, Councilman Cruz said that with the Arts Commission coming on board with what the vision that council has for the telegraph corridor, go back to the drawing board, come up with something that's representative of the high-tech quarter that incorporates art, and I'm happy to bring back to you something I think that fits more in line with the council's vision. We have Chris Vogelheim from URS, Akon, and Mark Trudue from Denso here. I'm going to do a quick overview and then ask you gentlemen to come up and answer questions. I'm just going to put it in the blank screen. So, just to remind the council, this is the, this is the existing Old Collum sign, it's a low-rise, sign is a median. As you come off of Telegraph Road, Telegraph Road being north-south this way, there's a median that's actually in the right-of-way, the council had approved the sign back in the 80s, it's located about 15 feet off the sidewalk, and what Denso is proposing to do based on your recommendation is actually redo the whole sign altogether, redo that, actually the whole median, upgrade the landscaping, use uplighting, and introduce these sculptural elements that tie into the base of the proposed sign. Raise the sign up so that you can see it in relationship to a person, it'll be about six feet, six inches to the top of the base, 11 feet this way, and it'll be prominent off of this sculptural element that will be repeated four times throughout the median. Replace the landscaping, again, since Denso is a Japanese-based company, incorporate some of the ornamental trees with uplighting, and you can see the sculptural elements that go through the design. And this is their kind of final product, it's a perforated metal to represent the high-tech, it's got backlit LED lighting that will be lit at nighttime but not too bright, and incorporates Denso colors. My understanding is that if the council does approve this, they're going to take this plan and do a master signs plan throughout the whole campus and tie that in. With that brief introduction, I'd like to invite you gentlemen to come up here and answer any questions that the council may have. If this is a favorable item, this will move forward to council next weekend on the consent to amend the condition of the site plan to allow this to happen.
And if you could give us your name and business address, maybe.
Sure, I'm Chris Vogelheim, I'm with URS, and my address is 27777 Franklin Road, Southfield.
Mark Trudue, 24777 Denso Drive, manager of camps operators for Denso.
Did you have any other comments that you'd like to add?
Actually, you did a great job presenting, so thank you very much.
Yeah, the other, Terry, the one that you showed before that was similar to this?
Yeah.
The other one, you have that triangular base, or is that, yeah, behind the tree? That's, that's not the same, is it?
Yes, it is, it's just, this is more of a outside elevation, this is more of a perspective with a blow.
That, to me, looks like it's on, that triangle looks like it's on the ground, flat, as opposed to...
So, if you... It's raised a couple feet off of the ground, and then it disappears into the landscape. It's sort of a sculptural...
I like it, I like it being raised, I like it being raised.
It's two feet from the ground level to the base of the sign, and then another six feet on top of it.
So, that whole, but that whole thing stands up, than that gray key stands.
Right, and it's sort of a V-shaped point.
Yeah, but similar to what that first showed, I love that, I love that.
Correct.
Thanks, thank you.
You want to...
Just looks better than the first one.
David, I love it, it's a great improvement over what's there right now, and, I don't know, we have you to thank.
We appreciate the opportunity, it's great.
Yeah, no, I love the shape of it, the color, it's top, and it is a tired median, so, David.
We want to help improve that up.
Yeah, great.
There'll be some uplighting in the trees that are planted, so the whole median will be improved and done.
You think that you will move it to our agenda?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for explaining so much.
Madam President, on the next item, we have representatives from Parks and Rec, Doug Block, Ed Gardell, and Bob Murray.
Can we keep the noise in the back?
Well, they're preparing, if I may, Madam President, the, now, council, this Denso sign, with the acquisition of the two properties that they made in the last year, the 25-year history, you're working with them in the tax abatements, it's paid off big dividends. If you were down at the auto show and saw the things they're doing, some incredible things in the automotive world, and you've been a long-term partner.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mehdi, our members of the audience. Tonight, we're back again to present the Parks and Recreation's vision for the new electronic signage at our Beechwood facility in Nine Mile Beach. We've incorporated your suggestions from the February 9th council meeting. Here with me are Bob Murray and Ed Gardell, the design inspector, Bob Murray, the Parks and Rec supervisor, who will give a brief overview of the project.
As you remember, back when the Denso sign came in, we brought a proposal for electronic sign for Beechwood, just west of the arena, Long Beach Road, and the proposal didn't go too well, so we were asked to come back with a sign that more mirrored what we're doing out at Carpenter Lake. So, we took that sign, took it back to Levan Way, and they were able to incorporate electronic sign into a sign that looks very much like Carpenter Lake.
So, if I might, real quick, this is going to be electronic portion, it's not actually going to be red, it's going to be amber to reflect the same unit that will be out on the front lawn, it'll be pretty much the same unit, it'll shrunk down a little bit in size, so that'll actually be amber. This will be an aluminum cabinet to match, pretty much exactly matches what is over at Carpenter Lake, just a change, obviously, in the copy. These will be projecting out, just a small amount, what they call a push-in letter, plastic letters pushes through and will be illuminated, but also the small amount that sticks out from the back base will also create like a halo effect around the letter, so it'll kind of glow a little bit, too. And this, of course, is the same split rock that is on the Carpenter Lake, and actually the pillars that lead into Carpenter Lake also are the same, the same split rock with a limestone cap, similar to the limestone cap that's on the one in Carpenter Lake.
Um, you know, it's taken improvement, I like it, it's just a suggestion, you can take or leave. When you use all caps, you might want to think about using a raised cap for the B, the W, the R, and the C. Within one of your earlier designs, this one, for instance, it's still a cap, but it's, it's, it's just a little easier on the eye when you do all caps.
Again, you could use the font from this in the others, but it's really a matter of personal choice.
From my journalism training, that's something we were taught, just the, you saw cap raised, the eye can grasp it in there.
We went through several iterations to know whether each should be center justified, right justified, above the eye is towards the building, but we can easily break that.
And take a little...
That's a good suggestion.
And on my commercial art training, I, I'm sorry for that, my...
No, serious, I mean, that's, that's not my case, that's absolutely...
I would say that this letter style would not work with the raised cap. I think that you would go back to the other letter style, just basically a Helvetica letter style, very plain, kind of A D like that. It's not an option really in Helvetica to have an upper cap version, so you'd be better, far better off doing something like that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's good.
That letter style would be more suited to having a cap.
But it's more readable, it's easier to read, and that's why you want to use it.
Very, very simple change.
Sure.
How soon are you looking to install? How soon are you looking to install installation?
We're looking for council's approval tonight, just the conceptual design, and then when we, once we get that approval, we would work with our purchasing agents to develop an RFK. The end goal is to wrap it in and have a sign reveal, the same sign frame as the sign on this campus, once the Evergreen Road project is completed.
Yeah, let's take out that site.
There will be, we work with the, yeah, we've already got with the, the electrician, we've already checked into having a board out.
The great part about newer signs like this is the requirement, and the back will be, it will be actually pretty green use of power, will be LED lighting behind these, and this is all LED, so the power consumption on these signs now is so much lower than what it has been in the past, that what you need to send out there really isn't that much. It's not like the old days where the one that was on the front lawn had a huge service going to it, so nowadays, it's really not that much.
And there's not an issue as far as cabling for the programming of the sign, because that's going to be done with radio frequency.
Correct.
So, it'll be a little hand remote.
Not that small.
Well, my log, log down from my computer, that's all I had, you know, so, and then you'll be able to go out there and then download from the remote.
Same thing that they do in gas stations now, they'll actually, they have a handheld unit, some of them do it from their smartphones, they actually, they'll use their smartphone.
Okay, without any opposition, we'll move to our agenda.
Thank you.
It's too much popping in the, in the tree, so he has not had a good time. The half-assed is going to be excellent.
Yeah. 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 All right, the next item I want you to tell is the council, my phone, Madam President, I'm sure this side, and I asked Rochelle, do you want to...
Vice President, I would like to start this side and ask, uh, Cheryl Freeman to present this. She has, uh, with her this evening Dick Carlisle of Carlisle Wardman. Uh, last fall, council authorized us to proceed with the satellite designation, and I think we have shared with most of you that we have been approved by the state of Michigan, so this is the L D F A, the Local Development Finance Authority Plan, um, and, Miss Freeman?
Good evening, Mr. Councilor Mayor and, uh, Vice President Council. Um, I'd like to introduce Dick Carlisle of Carlisle Wardman. Um, we have retained their services to assist us with, uh, the creation of an action plan for our Smart Zone area, so we're going to go through that, um, plan at this time, it is a draft, and we have incorporated some other elements that we'd like to talk about this evening as well, and I believe that a representative from Lawrence Technological University is on his way, so he'll be here, and, um, when we get to that component, we'll talk about, um, our incubator and accelerator space.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council, I'm really pleased to be here, thank you very much for having me tonight. It's been a real pleasure doing the, uh, work, uh, so far, working with both the city of Troy and the city of Southfield in terms of the fifteen-year extension of the joint L D F A plan. Uh, from our work with that, and working with Mr. Zorn and, uh, Miss Freeman, we began to look at the park itself, you know, as, as an element of the city, and I was really pleased to hear some of the things that I heard, uh, Mr. Crowe speak about tonight, and about some of your vision for your city center area in terms of creating a sense of place, because frankly, that was one of my observations about your quote "smart zone." Um, it did not appear to me that we had, had an area that had the kind of identity that, uh, would be helpful in terms of attracting the kind of technology-based business, and frankly, any kind of businesses that you have. But you have a remarkable area there that, uh, has a great deal of economic development potential, and so we began to look at what other elements could be incorporated in the Smart Zone to really realize all that potential. So, as I said, in two thousand and three, your joint L D F A was created, uh, between the city of Southfield and the city of Troy, I, I think it's been a partnership that's worked out great, uh, and it's also a partnership that's going to extend now for another fifteen years as an extension, um, that we've been approved for, approved for by M E D C, once we finish the, uh, joint L D F A plan. As we know, the Smart Zones are state-designated areas to, to attract technology-based businesses, however, in our opinion, critical to that success is also to that success is also to create an environment where you can really attract an entrepreneurial, uh, culture, and that is what we've, uh, what we're striving to do here with this design plan. The Smart Zone Design Plan, uh, really provides a really, a realistic roadmap for the future, that where we're looking at land use, planning, redevelopment, and design elements that you can incorporate into these, in the Smart Zone to really, that will really create an attractive economic environment. Again, I'm going to use the same words as I think as I heard, you heard your planner speak about before in terms of quality places, entrepreneurial networks, talent, and creating business attraction, and a positive branding narrative, and the things that we're looking at throughout this plan are programming and partnerships, marketing and branding, place making and beautification. You can't forget about infrastructure, we know that in an environment of fifteen years, that you're going to have to invest more, you know, money in keeping the roads and other forms of in, infrastructure in the park up to date and current, and finally, the potential for infill development to create, again, more of a sense of place in this, in this zone. As we've put forth in the plan, what we're looking for is, is almost a twenty-four-seven atmosphere in the park. Now, probably, uh, it might be exaggerating a little bit, it might be more like an eighteen-seven, but the idea is, well, once you, you, once you arrive, you're arriving to the Smart Zone Park, and, and there's a new gateway system, and so you have a sense of arrival to this place of employment that has a real exciting, uh, economic, uh, environment and cultural When you are working there, you, you are, realize you're in the center of innovation with mixed-use development, a focus that there's, uh, there's new, it's a new attractive area where there's walkways and, and attractive streetscape, and that you have additional uses there that really, you know, fill out the entire environment that, other than just employment. That life after work, um, that there's actually services within this area that, that you can walk to, or that after work you can actually attend a happy hour with your coworkers and things of that nature, that are all within walking distance of the Smart Zone Park. And, you know, we have many thousands of employees that already worked in the Smart Zone, that's probably a small number of what could potentially occur there, because the existing buildings being filled up, and the vacant land being developed, and within that entire area, we're literally looking at thousands of, of, uh, of workers that are in a potentially very walkable environment in that particular area. And then finally, the weekend family time, you have an amazing asset there in Double Creek Park, but it's visually hidden, and it is not connected with the rest of the Smart Zone, and with a younger workforce of, of being attracted to that area, we see that as a real economic asset in that area, to be able to attract a workforce in that particular area, that, that we can incorporate programming in with the park and, 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 uh, the facilities that can be attracted to the park, so that it really becomes a real asset, not just during the work time, but also on the weekends. So, when we do a plan, frankly, pretty pictures are all great, but unless it can be translated into action, it's not what the paper is written on. Um, we developed a variety of different statistical data in here that really emphasizes what the full potential is, but it all, and one of the things that we did was that we had a stakeholder workshop in December, and one of the things that we've been doing more and more recently, when we, when we talk about a development area, we actually, we actually approached the people who are going to be investing their money in that area. So, we met with, uh, members of the banking community, with members of the real estate community, real estate holders, and, and much of what you see in this plan were ideas that came from them. And there are a series of five things which I'll, which I'll, I'll end my presentation with in terms of things that we can, we can do right now. Throughout, uh, there's a very specific implementation plan incorporated in that tied to specific timeframes. I won't go through every single one of these things, because I'm going to, I'm going to finish my presentation with the things that we see very early on. But, as I said, again, we think that unless you have a very, uh, uh, specific strategies tied to your actions, you'll, you know, end up not being the plan that's implemented. And so, in this plan, we've identified some very specific things that we'd be, that we'd be working with the stakeholders, and your L D F A, and council, and your planning commission to implement in a very short period of time, this is three to five years. So, things to do right now, and, and we're going to identify five things that have been identified, but the purpose of identifying these things were really to engage stakeholders right away, you know, so that, that it is not, you know, we're not looking at a plan that, you know, people are thinking this won't happen in the near term. We want to engage stakeholders, we want to strengthen the vision, we want to refine the priorities, we want to create an integrated approach, we want to focus on assets and opportunities, and all of these may lead to some lighter, quicker development of cheaper strategies. First thing is to develop an advancement committee in the Smart Zone, in order to really engage the stakeholders with our L D F A, with the city and county officials, with private business, uh, representatives, and what do we want them to do? We want them to become champions of the plan recommendations, to support the district's Smart Zone marketing and branding, and to seek programming opportunities. These are going to be the ultimate, you know, largely composed of the users of the park and the people who are going to invest in the park, and we want to gain their interest in investing money in the park, because that's what really this is all about, is to increase economic opportunity, tax base, and jobs for the city of Southfield. This is a very exciting thing, Shelley, do you, uh, do we want to talk any, uh, Mark is, we're still waiting for Mark?
Sure, we can, I can chime in right now.
I just wanted to comment on what this, this presentation was.
Oh, oh, it's still kind of going through, so I just want, this is one of the main components of the, of the large components of the plan. So, um, one of the, the big, um, components is to focus on the entrepreneurial spirit of the community, and to work with Lawrence Technological University, and so, we're able to utilize the dollars that are generated from the Smart Zone to build out incubator space outside of the actual zone, um, because it's going to further the activities of the Smart Zone. So, partnering with Lawrence Tech, Lawrence Tech submitted an application to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and received financing to run an incubator space on their campus. So, our goal is to help facilitate the development of the incubator, as we've talked about over the years, that that was something that was important to the city council, was to have an incubator and accelerator is a space where you take existing companies that need extra assistance to get them to the next level, the second-stage businesses, to help propel them to do greater things. So, this space is going to be on the campus of Lawrence Tech, they own an office building, it'll be four thousand square feet of that space, we will help build out the space, um, doing the development of it. It's going to include large collaborative spaces where teams can come together and work in that new environment that people are looking to, to be in at this time. It's going to have meeting room space, that's going to be filled with high-tech equipment, so that if someone wants to come in and use the space for a conference room and conference to China or wherever, the software, we're hoping, is going to be able to, you can save your reports and your conferences on that computer and use it, uh, later on, it's going to be extremely high-tech. Many of you have been to the Microsoft facility of Blue Water Technology, so you might have seen a lot of that new technology, so we're hoping to incorporate that in this space. Lawrence Tech is also partnering with Siemens and Jacobs Engineering to assist with workforce development components. Um, many small and midsize manufacturers have not, um, moved their businesses forward by, um, taking advantage of the new technology, many of them might be nervous or not wanting to make that major investment. We realize that if these companies don't take the next step and start using technology, they're going to be out of business, and so, as all the tier, tier ones and large auto suppliers are requiring things to be prototyped or submitted via computer, if your company can't do that, you're not going to be in business. So, Lawrence Tech is going to be bringing together workforce development and showcasing tools to upgrade the workforce, and we're going to have all those components in this space, so we're really excited about that, and that's one of the components that we'll be asking for funding, um, at the next council meeting. Um, and then we also, we've received a lot of positive feedback from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, from a lot of leadership that knows the strength of incubators when they're partnered with technology universities, and so, we would like to conduct a study, a pre-study to, um, in order for us to prepare for a larger grant that we want to submit to the federal government, to the Economic Development, um, agency, um, and this study is required, um, to help secure that grant. So, um, and we're hoping to have, sort of have purchased a larger facility when we can expand our incubator space and accelerator space. So, that, that's what the slide is, and so we're really excited about that.
And it really is a key to the entire, to, to what we're talking about in terms of really, uh, creating and enhancing the entrepreneurial atmosphere as part of the Smart Zone. And obviously, ultimately, what the goal is, is that this, this incubator will also spin off companies that can ultimately be located in.
In the Smart Zone, right.
Um, we've also, we also talked extensively with the stakeholders about better branding of the Smart Zone, I mean, I think there was a feeling among stakeholders that, that there was not much of a physical identity with the park, and the fact is, is that, that we, we wanted to really create much more of an identity of it as a Smart Zone.
And, and that's the next component that we're looking to do, we'll be asking the city council to go out for a request for proposals from branding companies that specifically specialize in branding and marketing, but not necessarily public relations companies or advertising companies, but somebody that can really help us create that identity. There's many different Smart Zones around, and they all have this special appeal to them, they have catchy names, and they really capture the essence of what the facilities are doing, and that's what we're hoping to do at this location as well.
Um, and part of that is to really create some, uh, some physical, uh, identity within the park, uh, again, even to the point there were, what was identified to us by stakeholders is that there's not even any entryway signage, and so the idea, and once you're in that area, it's difficult knowing, you know, how to get from one place to the other, so the concept of both entryway signage and wayfinding within the park, um, is, is also envisioned by this, and again, the, the visual images of these would, would also be to use to tie together elements of the park so that there, that there was a more of an integrated image within the park. Um, there is a number of other improvements of better park, and I won't get into all those details, but when we talk about the gateways, the street space improvement, I think Mr. Crowe used the term public realm, that's what we're talking about, in other words, is the image that you see from the roadway is, uh, there is a design concept associated with that, uh, various intersection and, and, uh, infrastructure improvements, um, you know, and essentially, a, a more coordinated design plan for the entire park that makes you believe that once you're there, you're in someplace that is unique and special and is the center of, of, uh, economic development and entrepreneurial activity. And then, then also, a more extensive discussion will need to take place with, uh, planning department as well as planning commission, lots of building maintenance that can actually promote infill development, where you can target some of the other types of businesses that, businesses in there that are, uh, supportive of, you know, that type of environment, and it'll be service businesses, it could be restaurants, it could be coffee shops, it could be things of those natures, as well as other types of businesses, obviously, that are of a technology-based nature, but the kind of things that are attractive and support an entrepreneurial environment. And then finally, uh, there are some infrastructure improvements, uh, one of the, one of the projects that has been identified as an early-on project is the road alignment of, this is a close-up view of Eleven Mile, it's a real dysfunctional area, that's a, that's, again, improving that particular area would really improve, uh, and increased, and identity within that area would really improve the, one of the entryways into the park, there's multiple entryways, but that's one of them, so that.
Oh, I just want, can you go back, one?
Sure.
Um, and many of you are aware that the city did receive a grant from, um, the state of Michigan for Pebble Creek Park, and we will be also working with the park department, um, and help serve as a match for whatever necessary improvements that are decided for the park.
We also have the grant for Eleven Mile, the, leading it to BASF.
Yeah, yeah.
And then BASF has actually announced a twenty million dollar investment in their facility.
Correct, so the city was able to take advantage of the dollars that we have set aside for infrastructure within the Smart Zone, and able to leverage those dollars for other improvements that surround the Smart Zone. So, um, with Federal Mobile relocated into the form of Blue Cross Properties, there was some necessary improvements for Eleven Mile that had to be completed, we were able to utilize the dollars from this account to help fund that, as well as, uh, Mr. Zorn mentioned, our BASF, which is on twelve, uh, on, on Telegraph in Eleven Mile, they were doing a major expansion of a hundred and fifty-six new jobs to their facility, they purchased their property, and they made a two, a twenty million dollar investment at that location, and we were able to leverage economic development funds from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, um, so we were able to utilize the dollars for that as well. We're very excited about this whole plan, and we're happy to entertain any questions.
To Mr. Carlisle, I, you may remember, I attended a visioning session, there was a feedback session, um, I read this over the weekend, we've done a fantastic job of capturing, uh, and basically, uh, I think the biggest problem with the Smart Zone is it's invisible, and, um.
Because it looks very smart, doesn't it?
The stakeholders that were there, um, I was just, I honestly, having been at that session just several months ago, and reading this, I'm just overwhelmed with, um, you've, you've captured it, there's, there's a real plan, um, I, I have to confess, I was a little skeptical, uh, sitting there and, and knowing that. I had to confess, I was a little skeptical sitting there and knowing that we've had this for years, we gave it an extension and money is being set aside and nothing was being done. So to see something this concrete come out with, with the recommendations that, again, having heard the feedback of the building owners that were there, this is great and congratulations.
We have shared the plan with the other attendees. Janet from Medical is here tonight and we've had some very positive feedback. We're having follow-up meetings with some people that were unable to attend and also follow-up meetings with people that were there that wanted to discuss some things further, so.
Mayor. Yes, you mentioned the park and I think one thing, a great thing that we didn't talk about is we're getting Parks and Recreation involved in that. When we had the ball field over here, we had a lot of corporations that played softball, had leagues and, and I believe, you know, recreation is so important today with, you know, you could have runs in that area, a lot of things that associate with recreation, walkways and the things that people today look for. And, and I think that the way you're actually right, the park is closed off, you go down a little trail and if you get to it naturally it may be open that and actually facing, you know, all the development as, you know, the entrance.
It's a real asset, yeah.
Yeah, the other way. I, we negotiated GSA one time, we did it, we had Optus Park over there, we exchanged property with Wayne State and that. And, and I just wonder when the federal governor closing these places, these under bases, that this one is not very well attended and used and maybe the possibility of some exchange or maybe purchase of that site be looked at and see GSA was handling that piece of property at one time. So we had 11s that were very active in helping us at the time and they're not neither of them there. The other thing I, I'd like to do is to somehow take a little history which I think is unbelievable history that no one seems to talk about, that was used to be called the Nike site. The silos there were protected all in North America and, and people, you know, I used to go down there and do silos and, and it's just amazing that underground thing existed there. They removed the silos actually not that long ago, the missiles not that long ago when they took them out.
Was that at the defense property?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yes. And, and but that was, it was cement silos.
On 11 Mile.
Yeah. And, and I think somehow, you know, that, that should be acknowledged somewhere in that area. There's a lot of, I mean, you know, you talk about today, defense, there may be defense companies coming in that area, you never know, that might be attracted to being close to a former Nike site or at least for whatever. I'd like to put some more, I'd like to put some more missiles in there myself, but anyway. But anyways, that, that is always our biggest history, you know, when we were just farms around here, that protected all in North America and Cheyenne Mountain used to monitor all those missiles and everything from there. So anyways, that, I was mainly talking about the park of that, that, and you know, it's interesting, they have cement, you know, light even, you know, there's even, you go in, you know, somewhere else and there's a big piece across the park and by the way, so for the goal, I call those people in there and it's amazing how you feel, you know, it was pecky-pecky, you know. And, and you can do it, a great marketing person can do it and I'd like to, that'd be great. And it's nice to see that Troy's name was first mentioned over there.
Really?
Yeah, it could reverse that a little bit.
Really? You can't get everything right, you know?
Always started it, you know, and then we expanded to Troy.
Yeah, yes you did.
Troy did not have it.
You, you, you did that, you did, you started the whole thing.
I just want to comment that this is happening quicker, very quickly. At June 30th of 2014, we had just under $1.2 million. That, we used roughly $700,000 to pay for the 11 Mile Road project. We have roughly, prior to the satellite designation, about $240,000 a year coming in. Now that you've been approved as a satellite, you're capturing those education taxes, this authority, this tax increment finance authority revenue stream will be growing very quickly. So you're in a position to very quickly move to implementation. And what we're proposing next Monday then is to move forward on commitment of the $200,000 for the build-out of the acceleration center at LTU, the study, $46,000, am I correct with that number, Shelley? For the next EDA grant opportunity that we'd like to be working on and then setting aside money to go through a competitive process to design a firm, to select a firm to help us with this brand offering. So this is moving quickly.
Can you?
Dick Carlisle's report here on is on board with the partner. I want to remind you Automation Alley is part of us, previous council action, put in $50,000 a year in Automation Alley. And I would encourage you to read this, the LTU proposal, what we are doing with the National Science Foundation and the ICor. This is stuff that, you and them doing it, and I will tell you, all of our patent law firms are watching this.
So we, the ICor program, Michigan ICor program is having a reception on Wednesday evening at Lawrence Tech, I believe it's at five or seven o'clock.
Did you email us, please?
I'll re-mail everybody, everyone was informed and welcome to attend. As well, Automation Alley is having another event at the library and Mayor for Kathy will be speaking at the event.
I know.
On April 15th, it's a practice.
You can talk about the missile silos.
It's in April. Okay, we'll double check, yes, it's a morning, morning event at the library. And so I will definitely do that. So, so we're excited about that. So we're going to be bringing more of their services over to the city of Southfield and to, to see that all expand. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. In the presentation you had to say that about changing the signage on 696 to reflect smart zone, is that just a vision?
That's a vision. That's probably going to be one of the ones, it's going to take a little, little time, but, but.
Well, during the discussions, that was a very important component from a lot of our large stakeholders. They, they wanted people to know that we were there, they also had expressed a desire. On some other major freeways, you might see a large corporation sign on the freeway, you might not see the building, it might be on the other side of trees. So that was something else that had come up, perhaps some larger demarcation signs that the company might purchase their name to be in the sign, so it might be a monument sign opposite side. So we're looking at all those options.
Many of them expressed difficulty trying to direct people, you know, to their offices, you know, clients, customers, you know, people from their, boys from other offices.
I think we have enough power to make that timing come out.
And so that was one of the things, and this is an idea, obviously, would be something we'd have to work with them on, but it's one of a number of areas where we think to really enhance the identification of the park.
As we go through this, the branding and identification and signage, I will share with you, Last Job, the Blue Bridge, that was a placemaking element and using that, and when we were working on the Super Bowl, that was every three miles, we were trying to do something. So I'm not advocating a bridge or anything like that, but there may be certain design elements that framing out 696 that help us establish our identity and that's the process we'll be going through.
Now, one last question is, as it relates, Shelley, to the incubator, the business incubator, and I know it's primarily for technology, can a part of the incubator be designated to the small entrepreneur that's not technology related that's interested in making this happen?
Absolutely, you know, we're going to have services there that are going to be relatable to all businesses and classes and, you know, we have a lot of those components that are available right now and so it'll be a place for people who might not know that those things are available. You know, Oakland County has a ton of fabulous programs that are available to all businesses and we're going to be bringing those services over to this space. So it's going to be ongoing, so it'll be open. In terms of the incubator space, people are going to have to submit an application and qualify, so it's, you know, because of that, it's a very expensive endeavor. But we have a lot of, we'll help people who are maybe new startups that are looking for space. We have a lot of space right now that is extremely affordable, plug and play space, just like the Southfield Chamber is already in space like that, where you can just walk in with your computer and they have furniture there. So we're going to be showcasing all of that space available, plus offering assistance to companies. And right now, Lawrence Tech is working with a company called Technology Highway and they are the, the people that are going to be running this facility for us. And in a small business, where a startup can go there right now and get a certain amount of free services for their business to help with marketing and programming and learning all those things, so we have those things available. So, you know, again, the incubator space because it is really expensive to, depending on what types of businesses are interested, but we definitely will have the opportunity for all people to come in, doesn't matter what type of business they have, to take advantage of the services available.
The accelerator portion of this is actually much more broadly based because it doesn't require having people occupy space there. So that's more of a, an aspect of the entire facility, well, we don't have it up here, but of the, that, that businesses that are, that are existing but need some assistance to get that next, make that next jump, to accelerate their business, that's a much even more broadly based program, being programmed out of this facility.
Right, and I'm familiar with those, I'm even thinking about small entrepreneurs just once they get started.
Exactly.
And so we're, we're hoping that our branding effort will be able, so people know that that's available because right now we have a lot of services to help people, but because we're having a information problem getting the word out to, to people, they don't know that we can help them. You know, we, I regularly speak with businesses that are just starting or have an idea and share with them different resources that are available through our libraries, through myself, through other partners. So it, that is happening right now, but it's just hard to get the word out. So I'm hoping that that's all going to be wrapped into this branding, marketing effort that, that we desperately need to get things out there.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you.
Very timely attention.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I've been excited about that. Where do we go with cable? What type of cable? I don't know. Cable.
So, we, we were getting very close to working out the issues that we had brought the council back in January with respect to the transfer request of Comcast. We're still working on it, there's still documentation that are kind of going back and forth. So at this juncture, knowing that council is being asked with item number nine, we've got a COW before the regular, next Monday, the 23rd, I'm asking that you table the Comcast matter until that COW. We have the extension through next, next week, next Tuesday. So what we could do is hopefully finalize everything, come to at that COW, talk about what the resolution hopefully of the issues are, and then if council is on time, we could have on the regular meeting at seven for a formal approval. So I would say at this point, that's my request, is to table it, it's not quite finalized of the language, it's going back and forth between the two sides, and so I think we would be ready by next Monday.
There's really no formal action.
No formal action, so I can let it happen.
Do you need a motion?
Correct. Yeah, I think if, if we could steal a motion just to put it over until the 23rd.
We don't have a meeting.
Definitely, so I don't think we need, I think we wanted there's a consensus that it's not in there, because it's not a public hearing or anything, it's just an item that we're trying to bring forward, so.
Is that for the 23rd?
Well, with that out in the opposition, if it moves to the.
Yeah, 23rd.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll go to item number six, discussion of the proposed.
Good evening again. We're here to talk about two proposed text amendments. The first one deals with expanding the overlay development district. And if you may recall, the council adopted the overlay development district two years ago. And since that time, we have, we had three approved projects that the council has authorized to move forward with this flexible zoning tool. All three of those are located in the city center and over 90,000 square feet of new development will be generated based on those three. One is the Civic Center, City Center Plaza down the street. Brick is being installed as we speak, they hope to have the shell done on May 1st and then within three months there'll be a build-out of the interior. I'm happy to announce that a new sushi restaurant will be going in there with sit-down evening and hopefully liquor license. There's also an artisan pizza shop with a liquor license. Bud Rutgers is going across the street. That's three new businesses that'll be opening up in the next three to six months that will start to address the nighttime crowd after 5:00. There's a witch witch sandwich shop that's proposed to go in there. As you recall, it's a two-story mixed use. The upstairs space of Mr. Hassan Jawad is moving his offices from the Masonic Temple up there and he's using the same concept of the shared office space, so he's going to be creating it as a flex space. He'll have his main business there, but an individual entrepreneur can come in there and plug and go. They'll have shared administrative support, conference room and other facilities there. So that's moving well underway. You may recall that the council approved 14,000 square foot in front of Traveler's Tower. We hope that they'll be breaking ground later this summer and Arborloss, it sounds like there's, that need for housing is continuing to grow, especially with some of the recent announcements and they may be moving forward with their phase three building that was approved by council. Again, just to reiterate, when we started this, we, we recommended that we focus on the more denser office cores of the city that are more pedestrian friendly and they included the DDA district, the city center district, Karen Redd, and the Southern Telegraph Road which has been designated as our Southfield Technology Corridor. We've had two years to test it out, to have the council feel comfortable with, with the proposal. This is only an expansion of the eligible areas, they still would have to come on a case-by-case basis to the council. What we're proposing is the north-Southfield Road, that would capture the former St. Beat site. Again, if we had that tool available to us, we may not have used those nine variances. We're seeing a lot of good development happening there, across the street, as you recall, is Henry Ford optimized and Mr. Spence and I are talking with two or three other developers that are talking about either new construction or major redevelopment along that corridor. So we want to have this in place to take advantage of that. Also, another hot area is the northwest corridor here where Dur Automotive is coming in. Again, this would have been a great tool to have on the books if, in hindsight, and we, we see the trend along northwestern highway here, North Telegraph Road and then Northern Southfield Road is potential all-boat areas for the overlay development district. Again, a minimum of two acres would be required and each would be taken on a case-by-case basis with the council. This is just another tool in our development toolbox and so what we're proposing is an expansion of the ODD boundaries. Now, just recently, Ms. Freeman, Mr. Spence and myself met with a German company that's interested in taking over 116,000 square feet of the former Staples warehouse building. That's a unique parcel because it's surrounded on all sides by freeways or roads. We think that the timing would work well if the council were to move forward on this expansion, that they would be our fourth ODD eligible. expansion, that they would be our fourth ODD eligible project. They'd like to take advantage of the flexible tools. Their primary, um, land use within the building would be research and technology with some office component. However, they have a small manufacturing, about twenty-five percent of that space would be manufacturing. They're currently, the, the zoning does not allow this type of flex space. It's more oriented to research. We don't, we don't feel comfortable just recommending a straight rezoning to light industrial because that would allow potentially in the future, other light industrial uses to come in here. This ODD, um, gives us that flexibility to allow on a case by case basis, projects like this. And the timing with, with their needs are, um, is they'll be following very quickly as the council moves forward with the ODD and, um, bringing in a rezoning application to take advantage of that. So that's, uh, the first text amendment and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have on that particular item.
How, is Staples moved out of there?
Yes, they're, they're eighty percent out of there and, um, they anticipate that the remaining operations will be gone completely within the next three months.
Still going down anywhere.
And I asked for comparison, I believe they, they provided that, uh, when they were in full operation, they were operating almost twenty-four seven with a number of trucking facilities coming and going. The proposed facility would be about a tenth of those, those trucks because it's more office and research related. So it'd actually be a less intense use. But again, our current zoning and what that zoning allows is not something that we would feel comfortable bringing off of Eight Mile and up into this area without this ODD provision. And again, these things happen very fluidly. They have, they will be relocating from a couple other, um, other areas and they need to get signed and, uh, moving forward within the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days. These things come up all the time and again, we just want this tool available should they desire to take advantage of it and it gives them council protection.
Well, um, I think I thought before, I'm not opposed to your recommendations. And I totally suspected that once Henry Ford and, uh, the Jonah Project got it rolling on twelve and Southfield, that those other unfinished spots up the street, um, would pick up. And then I understand there's also a proposal to tear down, um, obviously Cranbrook Office Building on Southfield Road.
It's either, it's either a tear down or a major redevelopment with, um, retail in the front and office warehousing in the rear.
With the previous, uh, presentation we just volunteered as it relates to the smart zone and what's needed in that area, will the ODD recommendation that you, uh, cover putting retail and restaurants?
Thank you for bringing that up. I, I felt to mention, I didn't want to get too ahead of myself, but the area in yellow actually is the smart zone and we've incorporated that as an additional eligible area. And I left the land uses vacant on this table depending on what the discussion is, but we will work with Ms. Freeman and Mr. Carlisle to make sure that the eligible uses that we want are, are now allowed per our ordinance.
And then once the council, the reason to begin to direct people to this in that area because we don't want everything stacked, you know, writing on everything we.
Well, exactly. And, and many times, Ms. Freeman usually is the first contact, but our office, a lot of times they'll, they'll call us first. And what happens is they drive by and they see a building available, but many times the zoning is not consistent. So then we ask them, what are your needs? What are your square footage needs, how many employees and what's your parking needs? Then we're able to use a cul-de-sac and other means to identify eligible areas and then we give that back to them. And, and so what might be, uh, more appropriate for the smart zone might not work in the city center or the DDA. Again, this is just about having the flexibility for someone to come to us. Like the Staples is a perfect example where in the past, we would have had to direct them to Eight Mile and then they would have had to find an available site. And I don't believe there's anything in the hundred and sixteen thousand square foot range available right now on Eight Mile because of the shallow frontages.
All right, I'm here. Uh, Jerry Rochelli.
Thank you.
If we could get some kind of designation along Eight Mile Road, uh, that would, uh, bring new development in there, whatever tools we might have, industrial development, uh, that we could put a sign on Eight Mile Road, uh, designating that. Uh, you know, it's really, we're looking at pieces up there that are presently being shown, but we seem like we're forgetting Eight Mile Road. And, and you know, the way Eight Mile Road is looking lately, I'm very embarrassed. It's, uh, it's really looking shabby and these are the things that we assumed that maybe there's no kind of, to say that, that what's happening. And, uh, I, I don't think they're really monitoring what's happening on Eight Mile Road anymore. It's like they're going somewhere else. And other than that, I could also key in on that area that's considered, uh, to really see that what we could do with that.
We actually, we, I know, um, Ms. Freeman is bringing forward a brownfield redevelopment plan for, um, a major demolition of the old tired empty buildings with, with some new retail that will continue to extend some of the positive redevelopment along there. Again, because this, this thing is not geared towards heavy industrial, but we, we certainly could look at another tool or another designation for Eight Mile.
That's what I'm talking about. I just don't want to forget about Eight Mile Road.
I think we agree with you and I, I think there's some enforcement.
At least have a study of just Eight Mile Road. The only Eight Mile Road Boulevard Association, that was really keyed in on, on reviving Eight Mile Road. And all of a sudden, you know, businesses are going north and all over the place and, and we're not really outside of the, um, businesses that are expanding, right? You know, the, the, the retail, you know, but some of that stuff that's old is looking older and, uh, and I'd really like to have some kind of a, you know, even an abatement or some kind of encourage these guys to tear those suckers down and, and, you know, and try to sell what they can teach or something.
We have been working with, uh, many, um, industrial brokers as well, all the environmental companies that have been approved by Oakland County. And you might remember the city, um, was in a consortium with Oakland County's Brownfield Authority and we received funds from the EPA that are funneled, that go through Oakland County and they go off to our business community. And recently we've had several projects that have come in on Eight Mile, um, to help people that might be interested in purchasing properties to do the environmental studies. So we pay for the cost of the environmental study and, and then we, we hope that, that'll encourage them to purchase the property and then if they need further brownfield assistance or other types of assistance, they'll be connected with us. So, um, just recently, um, there have been a few big projects that have come in on Eight Mile in that regard as well, um, you know, working with the brokers and working at different events. Um, our new relationship with the Detroit Regional Chamber has really helped expand us out further to different site selectors and different groups. And so we've prepared different presentations that I tape with me when I go and meet with companies and share that information. And I know the planning department, the building department use those documents too. And so when they're meeting with somebody that might be interested, you know, if I'm not at the meeting, they have that information to get it out and, um, we, we do want to encourage that development there too.
You know, like the Wolverine tractor, for example, I can't believe that building is sitting there and so many manufacturing users are.
I believe that's one of the properties that I just, um, approved a request for, um, EPA funds to do an analysis on that property.
If I could just touch on that, you know, the challenge there is it has a commercial zoning for the looks, smells, sounds and feels like an industrial building. And when we get approached, uh, they, they don't, they don't match or they're not willing to put the improvements into the overall site. And so, uh, we get these heavy industrial types of uses that would necessitate a rezoning that would allow a lot of things that we probably don't want there.
But you know, something will take over.
Yes, it will.
Whatever the market is going to be.
Right.
You see it going right down the street.
There's a interesting project moving forward on that location.
And, uh, and I just don't want to say, well, we want to have this, we won't have this. I want to make sure that we, we look at all opportunities on Eight Mile Road and get it cleaned up.
We have been working with some of that might fit, and fit our criteria. It's not too heavy, but it's, it's more business oriented.
Yeah, I mean, you know, landscaping, any guy that he talks to that was supposed to do selling stuff on internet, he was supposed to paint that building up and fix it up. He had a junk car out in Congress sale, you know, he's not supposed to do that. So we've got to get on these peoples. I wish we were another approved firm.
Okay, is that any just copy?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Okay. So on that, this particular item, we'd like to bring this back next, um, week. This will be a public hearing and so that we can get this eligibility going sooner than later. The next item that I'm going to talk about is on off-street parking. This is study session only and then we hope to bring this back in April for council consideration. But, uh, that will give us, that will give us about five weeks to fine tune the ordinance and to get feedback from the council. But, uh, since it is such an important item and there are a lot of businesses that, uh, I believe we received over twelve letters of support from, from major property owners, developers and management groups in support of, of updating ordinance. I, I have more detail in the packet. I'm just going to take a few minutes to do a brief overview and then if you want to get into the weeds, I'll be happy to, uh, to talk about the specifics. So our, uh, our next item is looking at a comprehensive overview of our proposed off-street parking provisions. And the question is why update the city requirements? Well, first, as you all are aware, that, um, there have been significant changes to the new economy. Uh, the effect of online shopping and internet usage has changed people's shopping and driving patterns significantly. Retail space is actually shrinking, um, going more to a showroom with less warehousing on sites and you can purchase online and it gets shipped directly. Uh, the only land use that we're actually seeing an increase in the need for parking is office space. And, um, I've got some details where the average, uh, office space occupied by an employee has shrunk from up to two twenty-five, two hundred and fifty square feet per person down to less than two hundred and in some major cities, it's gone as low as a hundred and sixty. Uh, I'd like to use the example next to, um, Ellen, that, uh, we have three to four members of Plant Moran or our auditors crammed in the space that one person used to occupy. And many of the business are going to this more collaborative cooperation where a number of young professionals are sitting around the conference table like this instead of having their own space. That is to, um, to create that collaborative collision. It also helps on, on build out space. It helps on less leased space. Example that, um, the mayor used down the street, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, was approved with about six hundred and thirty parking spaces based on the old standards. We've been told there's close to nine hundred and fifty people that are coming in that space every day and they have a parking shortage. We also have seen lifestyle changes affect, uh, parking and, um, parking habits. Uh, we also would like to reduce the zoning board of appeal waivers. In the past five years, we've had waivers granted from twelve to sixty-three percent of, of what the parking needs are. Now granted, those, those are for some of the smaller shopping centers, but it just, it just goes to show that in order to fill their space, um, our parking has been restrictive. We want to be competitive and have a competitive advantage over other communities. This is the first major update in over forty years. And, you know, a little bit of history, as you know, Southfield was the fastest growing committee, community in the sixties in, in, uh, Michigan when we were a very auto-dominated land use pattern. We didn't have a hundred, hundred and fifty years to evolve into our parking standards. We adopted standards in the late sixties, early seventies that fit that upward trend of growth with, with no, um, basically no balancing out for the most part in the last forty years. We'd like to reduce development costs and in your packet, I have statistics about the cost of a standard space, but, uh, for every ten percent reduction, uh, on a typical hundred space parking lot, there could be anywhere from a twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand dollar savings to the developer. Reduces upfront costs, reduces overall maintenance costs, uh, reduces stormwater, uh, detention and runoff, which all, um, magnifies into, uh, being more developed, developer friendly. Um, it also, uh, gives us a competitive advantage of increasing green space and landscaping, improving water quality and the reduction in, in impervious surfaces. And I have a table with specific recommendations I'm going to save for last and, uh, there are other cleaning up items within the ordinance itself. In highly dense areas such as the DDA and the city center, where it is more pedestrian friendly, more walkable, we want to extend the off-site parking provisions from three hundred feet to five hundred feet. So if someone has excess capacity, uh, down the street and they have, uh, different hours of operation, we allow that sharing of use. We just want to extend in areas that are more walkable, um, the distance that that would be eligible for. Now, if the council were to adopt a lower standard for parking requirements, we don't want the entire city all of a sudden to revert to the lesser standards without either going through administrative or site plan approval. So on a case by case basis, we would, we would look at, um, amending their parking requirements. We also want to build stronger pedestrian connections from the public walk for the main building entrance. We currently ask for that as part of our site plan review, but we don't have that beef on the books that makes it a requirement. We want to also integrate with existing transit stops. Again, this is, right now it's an ask, not a requirement. So for example, with, when Jonah was, um, building out twelve and Southfield, there was two existing bus shelters, bus stops. We want, we want to make sure that those are tied in with the public, um, system and that the, uh, developer takes extra responsibility for the maintenance and cleaning and upkeep of those facilities. We also are saying that these are just minimum standards, but we want the maximum over the minimum to, to be at twenty percent unless they provide a parking study that shows us These, uh, these proposed parking standards are consistent with the Urban Land Institute, Institution, Institute of Traffic Engineers, best, best practices, American Planning Association, review of national and other local communities. Uh, there's also more of an emphasis on requiring additional bike parking above and beyond our standard for, for park, bike parking spaces for land uses that lend themselves to more bike riding such as elementary schools, parks and so forth. We're changing the whole philosophy on how stacking spaces get calculated and are laid out. Again, one of the, one of the trends that we've seen is that, uh, in the past, when everybody was driving to the bank to use the drive-through teller, most people now use the internet banking and, uh, there's a fraction of the need for the drive-through tellers as there was in the past. And we, we kind of apply to one, one standard fits all for all types of stacking spaces, whether it's a bank or a restaurant or a car wash or so forth. We're revising the outdoor seating requirements to actually encourage more outdoor seating and not penalize somebody on a nice day. Now, these are just for seasonal outdoor seating, but not penalizing them to have a one for one relate, uh, ratio of additional parking. You know, the same customer that might come into the space in the inside in the wintertime that wants to enjoy the outside is not making two trips. And so there's a formula that allows for that. Also, we're looking at, um, more shared retail restaurant, um, more aligned with calculating parking as a whole center itself and calculating ten individual uses and then coming up with more parking than's needed. Even retailers, um, acknowledge that their parking needs are for the twenty busiest days of the year and they try to max out the parking for those twenty busy days because they make up a good percentage of their income. And the rest of the year, those spaces are, are empty. There's, uh, and slight increase in the general. There's a slight increase in the general office calculation as I indicated. We also are unusual in the fact that we require an extra two feet of overall width for our 90-degree back-to-back parking space. Talking with the fire department, they would like to see that extra two feet in the drive-through lanes. We currently require 20 feet for parking, 22 for the drive-through, and 20 again. Parts have shrunk, and we still have, and we have this provision for an extra two feet of overhang. Just by reducing that by two feet and putting it more into the drive lane is better for internal circulation, is better for fire safety, and reduces the overall impervious service by 3.8 percent, and we can calculate the savings on that. We want to align the sidewalk requirements with the non-motorized plan. We currently require five-foot wide sidewalks adjacent to all new development. However, in designated route areas, we would require either an eight- or 10-foot wide path to be put in on the developer's side as opposed to the city's side. Our barrier-free requirements are based on the pre-1990 MDA requirements and the pre-Michigan barrier-free requirements, so we're cleaning up that section. And we were going to consolidate the parking provisions from other districts in the ordinance. We currently have 43 separate parking calculations within our off-street parking, not including the ones that are buried by land use within each of our districts. So we're going to clean that all off and have one place you can go to figure what that is. And then finally, I asked Brandy to help me through semcon. The first map here on the left, on my left, shows all the public and private parking lot coverage in the city. With our waterways, and we have over 26 linear miles of rivers and streams in our city, that all of that water eventually makes its way into our streams and affects water quality. And then if you add all the rooftops and other impervious surface, this is not including single-family, this is non-residential and multiple-family. You can see the coverage that we have, and these things have a cumulative effect on pop holes, on maintenance costs, on blowouts of the stormwater and the infrastructure, and it's not good for the environment. So all of the things that we're proposing here is going to make a step in the positive direction. I would say that the overall parking would only be reduced between 10 and 20 percent across the board, but we're making significant reductions in medical office, high-volume retail, and cleaning up some of the various calculations that we have. And with that, if you have any specific questions on a specific calculation, we'd be happy to answer them.
I believe another thing you're saying, that what happens down the street, you say it's probably a little late for anything, but can't find a parking spot between 11:30 and 2 o'clock. At places, they're just jammed. I mean, success is great, but if you can't park, then we're going on. And I think that those lots should have been deeper for more parking. If you get two liquor licenses in there, I don't know how in the world that's going to happen. A two-story building, you have to bring people upstairs.
Well, I think-
They crawl all over.
I think we recognize that, and I think the ODD moves to try to fix that situation. Currently, about 60 percent of the site is not parkable because it's under construction. And as you recall, he was able to acquire one deep lot all the way across. That's four parcels that he's going to be extending the parking so that he's actually adding a lot more parking available. The council partially closed off Janet Street to make it a more unified site. The land use pattern where some of the businesses will be more busier at lunchtime, their crowds go down at nighttime when we get to greater nighttime generations. So all of those things were factored in when we created the expanded area. And we definitely did go through another depth of lot.
Eleven thirty-two.
I don't disagree with you, there's an issue there.
People are crying, and pretty similar. And I was concerned then because of the travelers' tower site, that, you know, building in the parking lot, taking all that parking and then losing some to the roundabout, whether or not they're going to have some parking. I think in some places, you can reduce parking requirements for these uses that are impacted between certain hours. That something has to be in between. You can't set for, you know, for going from 8 o'clock to midnight, which you sure can do halfway where people still get parking and you get in there and get their stuff. So they have only a lunch hour to get in and out.
Right.
And that's what the problem is. So they're double parking, they're down the residential streets. You know, they're dropping off and going around the block and picking up, and then people come out with bags. I mean, if you watch it, I would go down Evergreen Road, looking at Evergreen Road, and that's when I get down there, then I see all these things happening there, and I said, it doesn't happen on the west side, but on the east side, it's just too big.
Well, I agree that there is a problem. I believe that a lot of that will be alleviated once that construction's done and Evergreen Road is done. At one time, we had somebody counting, there was over 150 walkers from like the fifth third office complex that walked across and purchased items and then walked back. I believe the whole focus of the council is making Evergreen Road more pedestrian friendly, looking at shared parking, looking at different uses. I think will help alleviate that, plus the parking itself has been-
They park on the west side and go across the street and get yourself and go back.
I just, I think that'll change once the whole-
It's wild.
Parking is open.
Yeah, that's a good way to very much, yeah.
Yeah, so again, this item will come back in April.
I saw the caution plate.
It's good to be grounded. This item will come back in April, hopefully for public hearing and adoption. The ODD will come back next week.
Yes, Madam President. I have six personnel actions. I'll start with number six. That is an informational item, informing our council about Larry Searls, who has been functioning as acting manager, has been named manager of puppet works operations. This is not a management position, it is a civil service position. Items three, four, and five, I am not asking for action this evening. Item three pertains to our director of fiscal services, controller. We have noted the auditor's recommendations to separate the combined functions of the deputy treasurer/controller. We are fortunate to have Mr. James Pierce on our finance team. His background and experience will be available to our new director. I'm proposing to take Mr. Pierce from our deputy treasurer slash controller and name him as our deputy director of finance slash controller. I will be asking for council to approve that at the March 23 meeting. Item four pertains to our city engineer. I'm proposing to name Lee Schultz as our active engineer since July of 2013 as our city engineer. Again, I'll be asking for that action at March 23. And then the fifth, item five, is our business and economic development person, Rochelle Freeman. I'm proposing to name her our business and economic development director and also supervising our career center. I want to, tonight I am asking for rule 10 on items one and two. Item one is the appointment of a deputy city administrator. Last fall, we conducted, we received over 50 applications. Five individuals were interviewed for admission. My selection has a wealth of knowledge drawn from several years as a city engineer in a smaller local community. I would like to propose most of council, I believe everyone met John Misharina last Friday. John, is he here? I'd like to just pass him out. So I am asking for a rule 10. Some move?
All right.
Motion by Mr. Travis, supported by Ms. Dean, for rule 10. All in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed.
I'll move the recommendation of the city administrator on the-
Yep.
Sorry. Well, the recommendation of the city administrator to appoint John Misharina, deputy city administrator.
Motion by Mr. Travis, supported by Ms. Dean, for deputy city administrator. All in favor?
Aye.
Item, Madam President, item two is to appoint a new director of fiscal services. As you know, with the passing of Jim Charette, it left us with a significant void. I am proposing that we create a director of fiscal services, and I've gone through, I'm selecting Lynn Roberts in that position. And again, most of you had, all of you had the opportunity to meet Lynn on Friday as well. I'm asking for a rule 10 on that position as well.
Some move?
Yeah, motion.
Oh, I can't.
John, where are you doing it?
I don't know. You took my darn vote away from me, I'm sitting here like a dummy.
I feel you.
Sitting next to this kid over there.
For rule 10, all in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed. Motion here.
Then I'll move the recommendation of the city administrator for the appointment of Lynn Roberts to the position of director of fiscal services.
Motion by Mr. Travis, supported by Ms. Dean, for director of fiscal services. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. You know, I do have one question, and that is the business and economic development director, Rochelle Freeman, I motion for her to be in a great job. Looking at the jumping salary, the amount of the increase. I think that would be something about that. I want to put it on there.
Happy to, you and I can have a conversation. I believe what we're proposing is where the market's at in particular. And I think I have shared with a number of you, while we're going through the bond rating, I was not happy seeing an unemployment rate in Southfield 3 percent higher than the state average for the last three years. You know, I think, and when you look at that position compared to the peers, in most communities, that position is just doing business retention and attraction. So here in Southfield, it's handling brownfield increment authorities, redevelopment of sites, the PA 210 that we did with DUR. Now it's also doing this Smart Zone, working with Automation Alliance. We have a far more comprehensive entrepreneurial development program than any of our peers. And the programming that happens at the library, working with the British Chamber, the French Chamber, Caldeen Chamber, the Southfield Chamber, the black, the black American Chamber here in Southfield, all these different groups, all of these partners that come in. When I look at what we're doing, it exceeds what her peers are doing. And the fact of the matter is, the position has been way, way underpaid. In fact, lower than Madison Heights. And that, you know, when I saw, when I started looking at the comps, the other thing is, we want to make a difference in this community's unemployment rate and close that gap of 3 percent. It's going to take a different thought process. And putting, and working with, and our career center does a great job, but they're pretty much just following a cookie cutter program designed by Oakland County. And I want to try to see if we can get a stronger partnership going. That's what the Business Acceleration Center is about. It's not just about entrepreneurial training, but it's also a space for the universities and our community colleges and our education partners also to launch and do more talent. Two weeks ago, I spent a good amount of time with the director of workforce development, Steve Arwood, and we've got this gap happening in the state of Michigan. For those who can't find work, we've got to start closing that gap. No one, with the employment base that we have here in Southfield, none of our residents should go without work. So we need to go through what I call the analytic exercise of finding out why those people haven't been able to find work. What's missing in the skill development and their talent? And can we close that gap and get that unemployment number? This may sound like a lofty goal, but I will tell you, status quo is not going to get it. So I think this is about being more aggressive, and I think that's what we're doing with the Smart Zone, what we're doing with the Business Incubator Center. Now, we could, you know, the economic development that you had to do in the 80s probably was feather dusting compared to what we have to do today in the redevelopment. So, you know, that's, I believe the salary's in line. It's substantially less than what Troy's paying in other communities of comparable size.
I would just ask if, I'm not going to, I just think we could get organizational charts. I know there's a major.
We can have that before the 23rd.
Just begin to see where we're at, where the positions are. And if there can be some consideration for our employees. And I'm saying it's going to be a whole lot, but if you look at that, seeing that the unemployment rate is too-
I agree, but, and I've said to everyone in this room. And we talk to the business community all the time. And our employees haven't had raises. But our employee friend benefit costs have gone from 24 cents to 48, going up to 50 cents on the dollar. That's where we've had our cost. I get that this is a delicate balance, but I also say that our strategy is then about getting the tax base back. And, you know, in the private sector, your sales team is the team that makes that happen. And that's, a lot of tonight has been moving in that direction. What this council's done in the infrastructure arena. Now, you didn't even hear, it's been a late meeting, how we were able to walk out with a lion's share of infrastructure dollars last week at the Federal Aid Committee because we're able to med. So, you know, again, it's what is in our control, our infrastructure, our water, our sewer. This is about putting that team together. I don't think we have fully harnessed the potential opportunities with our corporate entities as well as our universities and our higher-ups. And that's partly what this is about. And I want to be clear, it's not a statement of dissatisfaction because I think our career center's done some great things. I think this is about just saying, taking a different, we can do, we can accomplish something else, we can challenge the status quo.
Yeah, I want to speak about this business and economic development director position. I am supporting this and I will vote for it because I think that Shelley has done an outstanding, really an outstanding job in this position. I would not, if I thought, as Louise said she did not, I would not recommend, I mean, I would not be not supporting it. I've watched her over the years, and she's earned this position. And I think she's done an extraordinary job, and I have, I find it very important. I think she's earned it and is doing an excellent job for us, an outstanding job, to be honest with you.
Same thing with, I've since I've been here, this has been a very long time that we've done some of these types of structural changes and hires and reassignments. And I, to be honest, I felt somewhat uncomfortable with them as well, too. Not that I don't trust your judgment, but we get what we have. But it would be nice to see some comparisons or something. I don't know what your process is in terms of how you do that, but just like you do with the bids, where we can see where everybody came in. I would feel a lot more comfortable about that when making decisions on what is a good contention and can be, especially if others are, you know, maybe a hundred percent.
There's a very comprehensive rating and scoring system in establishing these wages. And then we look at the marketplace, where they're at. And in reality, for this position, it was not a management position before. And in that period of time, the number of jobs that have been rolled into it and the complexity of those tasks are what's pushing that.
Yeah, I got you.
But we're, I'm-
Not about anything personal, it's just specifically about- Not about anything personal, it's just simply about the process and just the trust appears together.
Okay, okay, we could have a community development director here and that person we could promote to our team manager. So that, that community development was a position that we have to run by.
Well, we've also had an economic development director who also sort of gets a plan, so, you know, we can, we might.
Well, it depends, it depends also on, um, the development.
Fred and I go round and round on this, but with all the infrastructure we're building, we don't have a public works director. And I just think that, sadly, they get on top of all these things. They've got people who've dreamed their jobs in these respective categories, but I just think that there isn't that person that's really all of it. And, and, uh, and I, I guess, I guess I feel that that individual would have more of a buy-in to the community and what's happening on the street. And, and like the incident I was just mentioning last weekend and right out here today, you know, eighteen-wheelers on our brand-new concrete, you know, we have a thaw. And, and, you know, I told Jeb this at the State of the City, I said, Jeb, you had two trucks out here. I said, you know, oh, they weren't on the street, I said, how do you think they got there? You know? And he said, well, now it isn't thaw, uh, kind of, he said, look outside, where do you think the water's coming from? He said, we got a pond out here. And, and so whoever's supposed to monitor this, I don't care if Hubble Walk the Car is going to do, they better be here and look at it and say, get your truck out of here and don't bring it back until the weather changes or this dries up. You know, they, they pulled the, the snow out of here so they can get back working. Then they took up the asphalt with these eighteen-wheelers, they set up with a boat, they're, they're, they're top of their, their, uh, uh, trailer. And, and they're hauling on our road. I know that if a guy waits and measures, I've ever seen that guy, he'd be in jail. I mean, there's no way you can pile asphalt up over the top of a trailer and drive on our streets when you have a frost stall. No way on earth. You know, and, and who sees it? You know, I mean, I took a picture of this guy out here with the big, with the big, uh, things, the pipes today. You know, eighteen-wheeler hauling all these big steel pipes out to her sewer, water, whatever.
It'll be a lot.
You know, and, and, and I, I'm just saying is that I don't know how the organization has to be organized to, to buy into, you know, twelve million dollar road out here, you know? And there's a lot of things that I see, and I'm not picking on any individual, but I'm just saying is, is, are we missing somebody to monitor what's going on? The president, we don't have the money, but, you know, when you go through this, you know, uh, you can get a public works debt for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You know, how much are you going to save if you got to replace that road out here in five years? I mean, I, I just, you know, it's just the way I look at it. Uh, I'm not the administrator and, and I have not seen a budget, I haven't seen the numbers that we're talking about, but, but somebody's got to be in charge. Somebody's got to get out there and find out why Hubble Walk the Car, people are not out there, are supposed to be doing that? And where do they take the asphalt? There used to be a space between asphalt and concrete. And they used to take off the con, asphalt, and then, then by hand, they used to take the asphalt away from the concrete so you don't chip it. Our asphalt is snug right up to the concrete. So when they get in to tear that asphalt up and this roundabout, you're going to, you're going to put all that tar in it to make it look good. And, and that's the stuff that's going to come out of the ground. I mean, I told Lee, the fifth tree out here, you look at where they sawed it, you got chips coming out of the road now. You know, they're not very big, but they're like that big, you tap that like that, coming out of the road already, right on the cuts. We're going to have coal path on our brand-new road. And, and I think it's, I just tired of our roads not, not holding up and just like today, guys talking about, you know, uh, the bonded cop proposal once. And I'm saying is, hey, you have a starting order, there's nothing to say yet. Yeah, but you failed already. Uh, and, and, you know, you sure you're going to charge sales tax, but you haven't still told the legislators that you better not raise registration fees and this fees and all that stuff. One reason it's on the ballot is because of the, the sales tax. The rest of that stuff is all going to be played with, with them. You know? And I, I don't know, I'm just fending, but, but I just, you've been around and I see this stuff and I get tired of these roads, you know, crumbling in front of your eyes. And, and there's got to be an answer. No, no money being spent for research. Why are they crumbling? In Germany, they put, they put fibers into cement, it holds cement together. You know, here, they say it's too much money. Like, you know, well, what does it cost to tear up a road and put another road down? Put coal path on, anyway.
I think your point is, we'll take you.
Well, I, I'll talk to Fred about it. I just.
There's a way, I mean, a lot of roads that you travel on, there's, you have times saying there's a limit on the weight because trucks can drive up on it. Can we do something on that?
There are weight, uh, there are weight limits and there are frost laws. This is a, this project is an MDOT let contract and it's got to adhere to it. And I, I agree that the truck got here some way, and I don't know that frost laws with what we have today probably hit. Um, but there are frost laws that they have to abide by. Um, you know, maybe that's one of the things with the warranty, maybe the state needs to tighten up the frost laws.
Yeah, but if, if ever was an inspector out there, and that truck was coming last weekend, taking out the snow and pulling that big piles of asphalt out, I'm going to tell you, he'd have got a ticket and a half, and I don't care, because he'd have weighed that load. And that doesn't even take into consideration the weight load, that would be even higher or heavier than they would use on a normal day, which I'm concerned. I've never seen that much asphalt being picked up and going on the road. And that's what happened when they did ten. And like I said before, you know, those trucks came out of the hole and used our, and used our service drives to get that old concrete out, and they left us with all these service drives, eight-to-nine mile road over here in front of Federal Mogo. All these service drives are all tore up because they, they put all this heavy weight on it. You know, it's just insane. You know, I walked, I walked today on our bike path and I see DTE climbing all over our, our easements already and, and, and trucks, you know, they're not even sitting on a bike path and already digging bitches in our, in our side yards. You know, I mean, hey, man, I mean, this is, this is our city. I mean, you, get your trucks off of there.
Evergreen is our road, right?
Our road.
But can't we have a weight coming on it? I mean, they.
I'm, I'm sure there is a weight of it, but this, this is an MDOT let contract, too. That's, so you're playing by the rules of this contract.
Was this, was this something, was this truck something that was coming in to service the road or was it just stopping through?
Oh, they're pulling off, stopping off, and then they come back and get back on our road. They come in on our road and they go and empty up and then they go back on our road.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, the Oakland County did put the frost laws into effect on Friday, March thirteenth, and Evergreen out here is the Class A road. So what that means is that, uh, weight restrictions are reduced by twenty-five percent. And these are axle weight restrictions that are just the standard for any Michigan road, but when the frost laws go into effect, um, this is a reduction by twenty-five percent. So trucks can still be on the road, they just have to have lighter weights. And in this particular instance, because this project is still open and under construction, I mean, Dan's is not going to want to do any damage to our concrete because he would be responsible. If he makes one crack in that concrete, then he's got to replace it and say it's flat. So I'm, you know, and I did reach out to HRC, the design engineers and the inspector on site, I said, just, you know, make sure that he's very aware of these. You know, it's the trucking companies that have the best maps that are out on the internet everything, so.
Frost laws are on on a particular day, at a particular time of the year. Only God knows when the frost is going to come out of the ground. If frost comes out of the ground and you got a pond out in the middle of, of the civic center here, then that means that the thaw and the ice and stuff is coming out of the soil. And that means that the stuff is soft. They put gravel over here, they put gravel over here already. They pulled gravel trains in here and, and they got it on top of mud. You know, and who's going to come and do all that stuff now?
I mean.
I don't know.
The trucks are mostly on the side, on the east side of the road that is all going to be there now.
I guess I was raised with contractors all my life and I've never seen anything like this. I mean, you know.
The trucking companies are, they know those laws better than any of us because they're the ones that don't want to get pulled over for it. Those are big fines.
Somebody's got to catch them. Somebody's got to see them. They save money by taking all the snow off of there and, and bringing in, and bringing in the pipes today and, and, and taking out the asphalt. If they can get, if they can get through in here before the frost loss and thaw out a couple loads, it's money in their pocket. It saves them time to get this other stuff in, with the gravel in. And, and, you know, I mean, that's how these guys make their money, by breaking the law. And nobody, and nobody catches, nobody pays attention to them. And I, I'm not willing to ask them on my road there, I'm doing that somewhere else. You know, and I'm sorry, but I, I'm really upset about it. And I took a picture of this guy out here with a big pipes, big eighteen-wheeler, that's today. And he's coming right down the street, pulls in over here by our entrance lane, going down, drops some pipes down.
Well, I mean, it's something we can talk about, the city has their own way map here.
I told Jeb, I told Jeb this Friday, and he was supposed to get back to me, didn't do it. Gary was supposed to give me a call today, didn't do it.
I mean, our inspectors don't weigh those trucks. The contractors and the trucking companies that they use are to know what those requirements are on all the different roads that they travel on.
You know, the scrap yards, you ever see a scrap dealer that found a monument or something that they melted down? Did you ever see a scrap dealer ever turn in some guy that took down a bronze plate or something that's missing? No, they make money on it. That's what contractors do. They can get away with an inch, if they can get going on a project, if they did it done sooner, they make money. So they have to break a couple little laws and get done in one month, you make money.
I think that's your capital.
Okay, but I'm sure that I just.
All right, the next item is scheduling a regular meeting for Monday, March twenty-third.
Um, due to, um, the number of items that need to be reviewed prior to the meeting that we recommended, the committee of the board meeting is scheduled prior to the regular meeting with a start time of four-thirty P.M.
I ask for some of the agenda.
Well, one of the items is going to be the contact. And then, Mr. Zorn, you have several items you were bringing forward.
I've got a, a water and septic sewer ordinance that I want to start moving forward. Yeah, I've been sitting in kind of a park stage for a couple months and, uh, it's, it's actually, it, it changes our billing and puts us on par, um, with, with our common parts and my.
I have no objection, I just wondered, you know, what, what we're saying.
The meeting's up there.
Do we need a rule ten?
We do, yeah.
Uh, some move.
We have a motion by Mr. Cyrus for the back. It's approved, what we're ten, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion here.
And I'll move the scheduling of a, uh, regular meeting, we conduct it, please behold, for March twenty-third and four-thirty P.M.
We have a motion by Mr. Cyrus for the back. It's approved, we have a regular meeting scheduled, please behold, for March twenty-third and four-thirty. Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion here. We're moving to the communication, the motion of.
After listening to this meeting for a long night, I was going to talk about something, but I want to change my topic and save the other ones for the televised meeting. This city has made a lot of bad decisions. I mean, a lot of bad decisions. This city, I don't care how many fancy things you put on the paperwork, it's still hodgepodge. That's what Fercotti used to say. When you do this organizational chart, make sure the citizens are at the top. The next level of that chart, it should be the employees. You guys have gotten a, uh, millage, two thousand and eleven, public safety, and you haven't used that money wisely. You used that money purportedly to give a three million dollar brownfield credit to the Twelve Mile and St. Beast project. That's really stupid. Then you duped and bamboozled the people and asked them to vote on a ninety-nine million dollar bond proposal, that you still haven't done the right thing yet with that money. What you've done is you've created all these positions for your friends, you've given all these salaries, you can sit here at this table and justify that, but you cannot look at your employees in the face, who are really the backbone of this city, and tell them why you haven't given them a raise for fifteen to seventeen years. I'm sure the EEOC would like to hear something about this. I'm just really disgusted. You guys just make me sick to my stomach. And you can sit here and laugh, Mr. Zorn, all you're trying to do is turn Southfield into Lincoln Park. That's all you're trying to do. You're taking all of the people that you worked with in Lincoln Park and all these other jobs, and you're bringing them, infiltrating them into Southfield. You don't give a darn about these employees here. You don't give a darn about these employees here. Now, what you guys need to do, you need to audit yourselves. You need to audit yourselves to see if what you're being paid to do, that you're doing that job. You need more transparency in this city. This is the reason why you block people like me and other residents that have been watching you for years. Passion has no address. And you need to understand that. And Mr. Cruz, I applaud you tonight for talking about giving you more information before you vote on something that could have some serious ramifications later on. Dr. Cyber, I applaud you for so many years, always talking about transparency in this city. And it still hasn't been done. Residents, employees, and all of this other rigmarole.
And your time is up.
I wanted it to be on that, rigmarole.
And we will keep the citizens that live in this city top priority. The next person on our agenda is.
And the one that has.
Mr. Nelson Thrasher here. We'll move to Clayton if it's, uh, Parch.
Yeah.
Pronounced that correctly? And we have three minutes to address. Johnson for here. Then we'll move to Mr. Gerard Muller. Three, oh, yes.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Muller. My address is Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four A-Cell, three seven. Tonight, I would like to thank this council for its quick response time on an issue that I raised last June the fifth at the COW. Let me refresh your memory. I pointed out on June the fifth, an aberration that appeared on council's agenda for the televised council meetings. To be precise, the reoccurring parenthetical sentence that followed the bold-faced type announcing the consent agenda that stated, and I quote, "Any item on the consent agenda will be reviewed for discussion upon the request of a council member, the mayor, or a member of the public." It was that last phrase, quote, "or a member of the public," unquote, that I was found troubling to me, and apparently troubling to you. Council quickly cut the Gordier. Council quickly cut the Gordian nut by deleting the whole sentence from the agendas. And then on September twenty-second, council added Rule Number Thirteen, the Council's Rules of Procedures, which states, and I quote, "Any item on the consent agenda will be removed for purposes of discussion upon the request of any member of City Council or the mayor," unquote. No longer will the Fred Bunkers of the world have a legal hook to disrupt future council meetings like Fred Bunker did last May nineteenth. Where did this aberration come from? Well, my best guess is that it came from the council meeting of April eleventh, nineteen seventy-seven. The minutes infer that the nineteen seventy-seven council was operating under duress because they were in violation of state law. They were eleven days late in establishing rules of procedures mandated by the Open Meetings Act, Public Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six. In council's rush, they made several mistakes. This appears to be one of those mistakes. The other lingering mistakes I will be addressing in future presentations. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
And hopefully for the medication items, I don't know that this time we'll take the most important ones. But there's a problem, there's a...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My job's going to be around...